Board of Commissioners for June 8, 2019, and ask Commissioner Beasley Brown to introduce who will be providing our invocation and pledge allegiance.
Yes, I am inviting the very Reverend Becca Kello from the Episcopal Church here in Bowling Green to give her invocation. Since we are having our public meeting on our housing market survey, and it'll be addressing a lot of the affordable housing needs, I wanted to invite her in particular because she has been such an amazing leader in our community around addressing issues of homelessness. And all of our churches, I think, are going to be a big part of how we respond to what we learn about this evening, and have been leaders. So, thank you, Reverend.
Let us pray. Almighty God, who created each and every one of us in your own image, grant us grace to reverently use our freedom, and to help us employ it in the maintenance of justice in our community. Send down upon those who hold office in our city, especially Bruce, Sue, Joe, Slim, and Dana, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose and right discernment they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. O Lord, may they, in their leadership, and we as citizens of Bowling Green, be ever swift to love. May we make haste to be kind to each of our neighbors, and may we never make peace with oppression. In the name of the one holy and undivided God, amen.
And then I would also like to invite up Kristin Harden. She is the WKU Stonewall Seat Suites LGBTQ+ Living Learning Community Resident Assistant. If you did not know, June is Pride Month, and so I wanted to invite her as a representative of her organization who is doing incredible work. And a lot of the emails were received on the fairness ordinance, and in testimony, there was a lot of the students that talked about how important it was when they came to Bowling Green that WKU was a supportive community for them. So, thank you, Kristin, for leading us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
I'd like to invite a gentleman up from our Bowling Green Hot Rods community. David Pinchuk is here with us tonight, and I believe you have a little announcement to make, and I invite you up to take this time to make the announcement and do your commercial.
So, as everyone knows, we won, the Bowling Green Hot Rods, won the championship of the Single A affiliate of Tampa Ray Rays this year. And so, we have a monument ring to present to everyone here. And Eric and Jack wanted to be here to present this, but this is the weekend of the All-Star events, so they're out of town in Chicago, or South Bend for that. So, I'm here to present this to everyone, and just thank everyone's support, and hopefully come out again more this year and see another championship. We're in second place this year, and we have eight All-Stars out of nine starters, so we are in great shape again to do it another year.
Thank you, David.
So, thank you for your support.
Brent, would you bring that up here just in case somebody decides to?
Throw it.
Yeah, no, walk off with it. That's a nice, nice ring. Let y'all take a look at it.
I don't know. You'll have to ask Mr. Pinchuk.
Thank you, and congratulations. That's a great achievement to win the Midwest Conference, so something to see. All right. Secondly, I have just a reminder of how good a quality our employees are. And I think we'd mentioned once before that we had received the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Excellence. But I do want to call to your attention, in their monthly magazine, the Government Finance Review published an article by our assistant CFO, Erin Ballou. This is a trade publication, a professional publication for the government finance officers, and it's quite an achievement to be published. So, we're excited and want to congratulate her as well. So, congratulations to Erin. Do you have any comments tonight?
Close. There'll be a need for a closed session. Ashley will cite the reasons.
Pursuant to KRS 618101C for discussions of pending litigation against the city.
Motion by Denning, second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Approval of minutes for the June 4, 2019, meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2019-94.
Municipal Order approving the career path advancement of James Kyle Goddard to the position of Operations Technician II in the Public Works Department.
Oop.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Beasley Brown. Mr. Maslow.
I'd like to ask Greg Meredith, our Public Works Director, to come up and present this promotion.
Thank you, Mr. Maslow, Mayor, Commissioners. It's nice to know that there's not just one All-Star around here. We've got All-Stars everywhere in our Public Works Department, and so I'd like to introduce one tonight. We recently had an employee that resigned from our Operation Division in the OM2 position. In accordance with our career path guidelines, it's my pleasure today to recommend the promotion of Kyle Goddard from the classification of OMT-1 to OMT-2. Kyle is with us in the back of the room. Kyle, would you stand? Kyle has proven his abilities and has the necessary training that qualifies him for the advancement into this position. Not only is he proficient in the basic duties of infrastructure maintenance, he has also received his certificate as a Rhodes Scholar. This training includes several essential training classes that include work zone flagger, drainage improvements, low-cost roadway safety improvements, risk management, tort liability, asphalt paving, best practices, construction of concrete, just to name a few. All those classes are presented by the Kentucky Transportation Center out of Lexington, Kentucky. These classes focus on the state of the practice, procedures that ensure that we perform maintenance activities safely, effectively, and as efficiently as possible. Kyle began his career with the city in October of 2016, and he's done an excellent job in all of his assignments up to this point. Additionally, he serves on the Public Works Employee Committee, which further proves that he's a team player with a great attitude. He's originally from Bowling Green, he's married, and has a seven-year-old son. It's my recommendation that Mr. Kyle Goddard be promoted to the classification OMT-2 within the Operations Division of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Will he be working for Bobby Phelps?
I'm afraid so.
Bobby has to have some help, you know. He needs help.
Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, congratulations, Kyle. Municipal Order 2019-95.
Municipal Order approving the promotions of Josh Hughes to the position of Assistant Police Chief, Jason Scott to the position of Police Captain, and Brad Hoag and Clifton Phelps to the positions of Police Sergeant in the Police Department.
Nash, second by Denning. Mr. Maslow.
We recently had a retirement announced. Assistant Chief Rick Wiley. I'd like to thank him for all his years of service, for serving the city. With that retirement, of course, always opens up some vacancies and opportunities for promotion. I'd like to ask Chief Hawkins to come up and present his recommendations to fill these vacancies.
Thank you, Mr. Maslow, Commissioners and Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm honored and proud to be here to recommend four of the members of the Bowling Green Police Department for promotion. One of the things at this point that I always forget to do is thank the staff that have gone in, their advice, their wisdom, their thoughts, their ideas, that have gone into ultimately making these promotional decisions. Every time we have an opportunity to make promotions, those are not done in a bubble, right? There are a lot of people, there's a lot of consultation, there's a lot of wisdom, there's a lot of discernment that goes into making all of our promotional recommendations. And these promotional recommendations are no different. So, I'll publicly want to thank the members of the command staff, of which there are eight people ranking members of the department, to include our Communication Center Manager, that have had a great deal of input. Their insight, their wisdom, their recommendations are strongly taken into consideration when we make these promotions. I would venture to say that I would not move forward with any promotional recommendation without their strong or full support with the names that ultimately I have the responsibility to recommend for promotion. So, I know many of them are here tonight, and I would like to acknowledge them publicly. So, if you're a member of command staff, please raise your hand. Since all the officers are raising, I have to, are all standing, I have to find another way to acknowledge them. But thank you all very much for your continued dedication to the department and your input when it comes to making the promotional recommendations. Also want to congratulate Rick Wiley. His 24-year career was an excellent career, well-deserved retirement. He actually worked three years at the jail before coming to the Police Department. And so, he had 27 years around us, men and women of the Bowling Green Police Department, and we acknowledge his hard work and his great career. With his retirement, obviously, there is a need for a cascade of promotions or promotional recommendations that we hope that you will take our advice and our recommendation and ultimately promote tonight. I would like to highlight those four. Captain Josh Hughes, and if, you probably have to raise your hand again to be acknowledged among all of the standing officers, Captain Josh Hughes will be recommended for promotion to Major, which is Assistant Chief. Sergeant Jason Scott will be recommended for promotion to Captain. Officer Brad Hoag will be recommended for promotion to Sergeant, and Officer Clifton Phelps will be recommended for promotion to Sergeant as well. Captain Josh Hughes came to our agency in 2001. He's a graduate of Warren East High School. He has earned his bachelor's degree from Eastern Kentucky University. One of the things that Josh does for us every year that's, if you haven't seen it, it's really interesting to watch. Josh does some instruction in both of our Junior Police Academy and Citizens Police Academies, and he is our resident DUI detection expert. And he does a program that includes what we call drunk goggles, and he's very entertaining, and he's very knowledgeable, and he's very passionate about that education that he provides the members that attend that. And if you ever get a chance to see Josh do that presentation, I would encourage you to do that. Josh has obviously worked in patrol as an officer, as a sergeant, and as a captain. He's been assigned to our Logistics Division as a captain, and most recently to Criminal Investigations as the captain. His wife, Brandy, his sons, David and Jacob, and daughter, Abigail, are with him tonight to help celebrate this moment. Sergeant Jason Scott came to the department in 2004. He's a Caverna High School graduate, a graduate of Western Kentucky University. He has the interesting distinction of being a Harley-Davidson certified motor officer and a motor instructor, of which we have, I think, three in the department now. He's also trained by the DEA to dismantle clandestine labs, which is a unique talent to have, and you hope you never use, but it does come in handy when you're assigned to the Drug Task Force. He has been part of the Motor Unit since 2007, as I mentioned, assigned to the Drug Task Force. He was promoted to Sergeant in 2013. His wife, Kanitha, his daughter, Kalen, his son, Cannon, and his mother, Janan, are all here to help him celebrate tonight's success. Officer Brad Hoag. Officer Brad Hoag, interestingly, well, not interestingly, he came to the department in 2008. What is interesting was he started his career with our agency as an intern, which is one of the conduits we see a lot of folks come to our agency. And so, that was, that is a good recruiting tool that we continue to depend on, but Brad was one of our early interns. Graduate of Bowling Green High School, of Western Kentucky University with a bachelor's degree, also a graduate of the University of Cincinnati with a master's in criminal justice. Brad is a police training officer. Those are the officers that help train our young new officers. He is a member of our Crisis Negotiation Team and currently serves as a detective. His wife, Allison, son, Nolan, daughter, Harper, grandmother, Shirley, and his in-laws, Phil and Linda Henry, are all here tonight to help celebrate what we hope to be his promotion. And last but not least, Officer Clifton Phelps. Clifton's promotion will be delayed by a couple of weeks, we hope, because this is a new position that will actually not be available until July 1st, when the new budget sets in. But this is a position that has been included in the upcoming year's budget, and so we're asking for his approval tonight with his effective date to be a couple of weeks from now. Clifton was hired in 2012, and interestingly, came to our organization by way of being a youth and missions pastor at Glasgow Baptist Church. He is a LaRue County High School graduate and a Boyce College graduate, of which I'm honestly not familiar with Boyce College. He is also clandestine lab certified, having been assigned to the Drug Task Force. He has been to our Motor Officer School, and he's one of our motor officers. And obviously, he has extensive training in undercover narcotics, as do all of our DTF-assigned detectives. He has a passion for working on Habitat for Humanity projects, and I find this fascinating. Spent some time in the country of India doing missionary work with a focus on orphans and secondary education. And his whole family lived in India with him during that time. His wife, Jennifer, his children Reagan, India, and Eli are all here to help celebrate tonight's promotion. And with that being said, I would like to present all four of them for promotion tonight. Thank you very much.
Ethan, any comments or questions?
Please call the roll. Everybody looks at Joe. Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Am I trouble making this up?
Yes. Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations.
We've got one more new hire, and then I'll let all of y'all slip out here just a minute. The next one is Municipal Order 2019-96.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Matthew Lefler to the position of Business License Inspector in the Finance Department.
Oop.
Second.
Nash, second by?
I'd like to ask Tiger Thuley, our HR manager, to step up and present this appointment. She was on the team to, for interviews, and is filling in today for Erin. So, Tiger.
Thank you, Mr. Maslow, and thank you, Mayors and Commissioners. This is a new position created in FY19. It will be one of two business license inspectors in the Finance Department. This position will increase the city's visibility and ability to ensure compliance with city ordinance regarding occupational license registration and licensing fees. Excuse me. The position was advertised internally and externally. Human Resources received and reviewed 54 applications. Twenty-eight applications were forwarded to the department for their review. Eight applicants were initially interviewed, and two of those applicants were called in for second interviews. The interview panel consisted of Katie Schaller Ward, Sean Weeks, David Lon, Jennifer Phillips, Marcus Barnett, and myself. Matthew Lefler was selected to fill this position. Matthew has worked as a Staff Assistant Service Academy Coordinator in Congressman Brent Guthrie's office, where he assisted constituents by sending and educating them on required forms and processes. He also handled requests and complaints by either advocating for the individual or referring them to the proper agency or personnel. Matthew has also has previous experience in customer service and with Lowe's, okay? Matthew is here tonight. This is Matthew. And that's all I have. I wish y'all have any questions. Do you have any questions?
Comment, quick. Thank you, Tiger. Appreciate it. Don't stare at him. Don't stare him down, or maybe you should stare Joe down. Please call the roll.
I take this personally.
Yes. Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, congratulations. And y'all are all welcome to step out, Doug. If you're still taking pictures downstairs, we'll skip over that and come back to you. Municipal Order 2019-97.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Greg Gay and the appointment of India-owned cell to the City-County Planning Commission of Warren County.
Motion.
Motion by Perigin.
Second.
Second by Nash. This is a reappointment for Greg Gay, who served one term, and replacing someone whose term is expiring. India unselled, has served on our Workforce Outreach and Recruitment Committee, and has indicated a desire to continue serving in this area, so we'll be replacing her in the next, in the next municipal order. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Order 2019-98.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Chris Page to the Workforce Recruitment and Outreach Committee.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by everybody.
Everybody likes Chris.
This is in Florida. He would be here tonight, but he's on vacation.
I think that the mayor of Third Street ought to be on the Workforce Outreach and Community Committee. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. I'm gonna skip item six until they get finished with. Yes. I'm going to skip item six until they get finished with their promotion pictures downstairs and go to number seven, which is municipal order 2019-100.
Municipal order approving the continuation of a public transit agreement with Community Action of Southern Kentucky Incorporated for public transit services for fiscal year 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Perigent, second. By Nash, Mr. Mazzol.
Back in 2017, we issued requests for proposals for transit services. Since we outsourced that, we can't do it in-house. That was responded to by one bidder, Community Action of Southern Kentucky. We had an option to renew for two additional years, so we are proposing to extend that contract for another year until June 20th, or June 30th of 2020. Of course, this amount of the contract is contingent upon the federal funds that we get from FTA and Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and ask for your approval on this extension for an additional year with Community Action.
Comment your questions.
Transit service.
Brent, just, would you mind just explaining why we have a public hearing after this vote and what the difference is, just for folks here?
No problem. So as Jeff mentioned, we procured these services through an RFP, a request for proposals in 2017, for three years, or one year with an option to renew two additional times. This is the final renewal of that procurement. So the discussion tonight is really focused on what do we do moving forward. So at some point over the next 12 months, we will have to do an additional RFP for services, management related to the transit system, but the buses need to run every day. So while we evaluate and discern what is the future for how we want to move forward, which is what the discussion this evening will be about, we still need to have the buses run every day, so that's why we recommend continuing our partnership with Community Action next fiscal year.
Comments? Citizen who wanted to speak?
I argue that the transit is incredible. They are nice people. They do a good job, and what we need to do is expand it. We do. We need a bus from Lover's Lane, because that's where everybody is, is Lover's Lane, and we need a express bus to go downtown to help people. So this contract will help this area big time, because it would help expand businesses if they improve transportation. It will help people get back and forth to work. We won't be using cabs. We'll use buses. So what we need to do is get that contract, and you vote yes, because that's what we should do, is support the transit, because these people are doing such a good job. So we need to support the transit, okay? And these guys are like doing the surveys and stuff like that, and trying to expand the transit. So we need to work with them to try to improve transportation.
Thank you. Any comments?
Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-101.
Municipal order authorizing and approving a contract extension for concrete with Kenway Concrete of Kentucky LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $52,530.
So moved.
Motion by Nash, second. By Perigent. Mr. Mazzol.
We bid out for concrete, and Kenway Concrete was the lowest bidder for this year. In that bid, we had an option to renew for another year. Kenway is proposing to keep the same cost at $52,000, and we use this citywide, public works, parks, everyone uses this contract, so we are recommending to go ahead and extend for another year, given the fact we're locking in the same price of 52,530. Ask for your approval of this municipal order.
Tell me how many bidders we had.
It says they were the low bidder.
Oh, it was only a renewal this year. My apologies. I thought we, I read because they were the low bidder, that we had put it out for bid this year.
We put it out last year.
Got it.
Fiscal year 19, and with the option to renew for fiscal year 20, which is what we're presenting to you tonight.
Sorry for my confusion.
So I was probably confusing.
The roll.
Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2019-29.
Ordinance granting franchise related to telecommunications system. Ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications or related non-cable franchise to North Central Communications Incorporated for the use of right-of-ways for the operation and maintenance of a telecommunications or related non-cable system within the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigent, second by Beasley Brown. Mr. Mazzol.
Back at your April 16th meeting, you all approved an ordinance creating a non-exclusive franchise for telecommunications services for use of right-of-ways. And so with that came the advertisement or the publication of an RFP for that franchise. We got one bid back on it, and that was from North Central Communications. And so here we are tonight. This would be granting them a franchise for telecommunications for all use of right-of-ways in the city. We don't know that they're going to go citywide, but this would give them the right to use our right-of-way. We do not have the agreement with this packet, but we will have the agreement to you once Gene is back in the office, and probably have it back in the packet for you at the second reading. But this is a pretty straightforward deal, just giving them the use of right-of-ways throughout the city. And like I said, we'll have the franchise agreement hopefully with the next reading, next meeting. Ask for your approval of this one.
And again, about another cable company, this is just giving permission, which is what our franchises do, gives permission for people to use a right-of-way, and they're going to string lines for telephones.
It's non-exclusive.
Yes. Anybody can.
Would this be internet at all?
Possibly, yes.
I've heard good things about their internet.
Any comments or questions?
This is the same company that is operating out in the county now?
Yes, they came from the Allen County line and have kind of worked their way in from that direction, working, I think, towards the Plano area. So that's the same company that we had discussed before.
But out there, they, do they have the right within cable, or do you know?
I think the county did grant them a franchise for cable. This would be for city limits telecommunications franchise.
So what happens if someone comes in and wants to put a cable system in? How would it relate to what we are doing here tonight?
This is separate from cable. We have a separate franchise for cable that's already established.
Yeah. But someone else could come in and put a cable system in.
Someone else could come in and put another cable system in Bowling Green, yes, sir.
Okay.
It would welcome them.
Yes.
Yes, in a minute.
I didn't say that.
Comments?
Anytime.
Call the roll.
Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-102.
Municipal order approving amendments to the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky Manual of Purchasing Policies and Procedures.
So moved.
Second.
Perigent, second. By Nash, Mr. Mazzol.
With this last round of the General Assembly, there was a House bill 26 passed that became effective July 1st, dealing with amendments to our model procurement code, which we have adopted as a city. It's KRS Chapter 45A. And what they did was they changed the definition of a small purchase, and they moved it from a $20,000 purchase to over $30,000, $30,000 in over purchase. So what that does is it requires, moves our sealed bidding requirement from $20,000 threshold to a $30,000 threshold. And so we are amending our purchasing policies, purchasing policy and procedures manual to sync up with that. Also included with this is it gives a requirement right now that there is competitive sealed bidding. When the price is estimated to exceed $100,000, requires construction contracts to have certain specifications in them that comes off. And the other thing this does, it changes our own procurement approvals. Our procurement manager will now have authority for purchases between $5,000 and $30,000, and then the city manager will have authority for purchases over $30,000 but under $50,000. Anything over $50,000 would still come to this board here. So the changes are in red in your policy. Katie's here, can answer any questions or clarify anything that I've said. Katie, if you want to go back and explain the $100,000 requirement on the construction contracts, I wasn't real clear on that, I don't think.
It's a bidder security, so like a performance bond type item. We currently, depending on the project scope, we don't always require them, but this particular House bill had said that any project over $100,000 should have it. But we have the ability to apply it to any contract regardless of price if we deem it appropriate.
Please call the roll.
Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-103.
Municipal order accepting proposal from Sun Life for employee healthcare specific stop-loss insurance coverage for fiscal year 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigent, second by Beasley Brown. Mr. Mazzol.
As you know, we are a self-funded health plan, healthcare plan, and with that comes some limits we have to cover, cover ourselves with those limits, what we're exposed to. I'd like to ask Lori Gray to come up and explain what we're doing with our stop-loss coverage for fiscal year 20, and she'll cover the basis of that.
Evening. Stop-loss insurance is purchased by the city to provide protection against our catastrophic or unpredictable claims because of being a self-funded employee benefits plan. This protects the city from assuming the 100% of liability for losses arising from the plan. Over the past 25 years, the specific limit has been increased five times, beginning at $35,000 and currently at $250,000. The city also has an aggregating specific deductible of $100,000. The reason for the increase over the years has been to save on premiums. Each year, the city's benefit consultant, Cheryl Morgan, solicits, evaluates, and negotiates stop-loss insurance quotes from providers. This year, the request was sent to 15 stop-loss carriers. Ten of those stop-loss carriers submitted quotes. Once updated claims information was sent to the 10 carriers responding. We received four firm quotes from those carriers. Highmark Life, or HM Life, the city's current stop-loss carrier, requested a 49.5% increase in premium from 700, over $745,000 to $976,000 to renew with them, and an increase in next year's rate cap of 80%. The current contract has a no-new-laser provision and a rate cap of 50%, so they took advantage of that 50% rate increase this year. In comparing the four options received, Cheryl Morgan recommended the proposal by Sun Life to be the best option for fiscal year 2020. Their recommendation is based on quality of the carrier, premium cost, and review and knowledge of impending claims of the city's plan members. The Sun Life quote is 92% below the HM Life renewal premium and 29% below the current premium. The proposed premiums are $641,706, which is a savings of a little over $104,000 compared to the current premiums of $334,000, and a $334,000 savings of HM's renewal. Sun Life's offer includes a no-new-laser at renewal guarantee in addition to a 50% rate cap for fiscal year 2021. This quote does, however, include lasers on two plan members. A laser is a higher specific deductible on individuals with known health problems or a prognosis of a health problem which may result in high medical claims. After a thorough review of the two members' claims, it is believed the additional premium the city would pay under the HM Life's renewal offer would exceed the amount paid by the plan on the two lasered members. Also, the rate cap of 50% under the Sun Life's offer will limit the premium increase for fiscal year 2021 to approximately $181,000, whereas the 80% rate cap on HM's offer will result in an increase of approximately $349,000. It is with the rerecommendation of our consultant that we recommend Sun Life proposal. The proposal will include two lasers and continue the current $250,000 specific deductible and the $100,000 aggregating specific deductible. I would be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
How does Cheryl Morgan get paid?
How do they get paid? We pay them an admin fee. They're consultants. So we pay them an annual amount, yes.
They don't receive anything by recommending one company over another.
Oh, sir.
Thank you.
Anything to add, Mr. Mazzol? No other questions? Please call the roll.
Perigent.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Doug, are you ready? Let's go back then to item number six, which is municipal order 2019-99.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting negotiations after sealed bidding for bid number 2019-54 for the police evidence storage building construction from Lanham Brothers General Contractors Incorporated of Owensboro, Kentucky, in the amount of $1,243,320.
So moved.
Second.
Perigent, second. By Nash, Mr. Mazzol.
So we bid out for a police evidence storage building back in May, around the first of May. We got three bids on that. All three bids were more than what we wanted to pay, over $1.3 million. We decided to reject all three of those bids and go back into negotiations with those three bidders. We had a meeting with those three bidders and kind of talked about what we could do different to lower the cost of this project. It was myself, Dave Hayner, Greg Meredith, I think Katie was in the meeting, and Chief Hawkins. Those three bidders gave us some ideas, and so we said, go back to, go back to work on it and rebid with these changes, and see where we're at. And so we did that, and came back in with these three bids before you tonight, with Lanham Brothers General Contractors coming in with the best bid of $1,243,320. This is for an 8,900 square foot building that would be located on the corner of the police headquarters, on the back left corner, if you're facing the station. We have hit this thing every which way, trying to cut costs, looked at all kinds of different options, and this $1,243,320 is roughly $75,560 lower than the original bid that came in. And so we are open to discussion, but this is, would be the recommendation to go with Lanham Brothers on this bid for the police evidence bulk storage building. And I'll let Chief Hawkins, if he has anything to add.
How would we build it?
This is bulk storage for any vehicles that we take in. I'll let Chief Hawkins answer.
The facility is essentially a secure garage storage facility with 10 bays. Also, it's designed in an L shape. In the corner of that L is bulk storage of evidence that needs conditioned space, heating and cooling, and so forth. I shared with some information with you all that sort of highlights some of the problems we're having. We're out of space in terms of our storage of bulk evidence in what was designed to be a temporary space to begin with. And so we're looking for a permanent solution, a permanent long-term solution to evidence storage that includes both vehicles that we tend to keep, if we keep them as pieces of evidence, we keep vehicles for years at a time in some cases, and we do have vehicles that we have had for years. But our bulk storage facility... Um, but our bulk storage facility, that could include anything from, you know, dressers or TVs or large bulk items that don't easily fit on a shelf in a bag, that kind of evidence. Um, we are virtually out of space to store that kind of evidence right now. And we're looking for an alternative, in particular, a long-term solution, a long-term alternative. I think we understand this project is an expensive project relative to what we had hoped to pay for it. Somebody in the, in the business would have to tell me otherwise, but I don't see these projects getting less expensive with time. I, you know, I can only anticipate the price going up and the need for evidence storage will never go away and it will likely continue to increase. And so we found ourselves at a crossroads and frankly, a difficult position of absolutely needing this facility. I don't think it's unnecessary. I think it's quite necessary, but it is an expensive project. And so we're asking for what is a secure storage facility, uh, on the site, on our back corner lot. Uh, so we're not even buying property with this project. We're strictly building, preparing a piece of land we already own and building this building on it. And I think that's just a reflection of the cost of construction today.
But, uh, Chief, what, what will the building have in it? Uh, I realize it's got, you said ten lanes?
Ten garage bays.
Ten garage, right, we gonna have inside restrooms and?
No, it will not have, virtually no plumbing. The only plumbing in, in the facility is associated with, um, sprinkler system for fire code requirements. But there is no other plumbing. Well, I'll take that back. There's an eye wash station, I believe, if there's a, uh, somebody who, who gets something in their eyes, that's also a requirement. Um, but there's, there's no bathroom facilities. There's no, there's nothing in this building that's not stripped down strictly for storage. And even the nine of the ten garage bays are not conditioned. They're going to be out of the weather, out of the sun, but they're not going to be heated or cooled. It's just gonna be like anybody else's garage. They're just going to be secure storage that we will have, that, uh, very limited access to, but it'll be on our site. So we can have excellent oversight and control of that, that piece of property for that evidence storage.
There is, there is one thing I forgot to mention that's, that's kind of led up to this. But if, if you all were, will, will remember, uh, the old Cabal Drive Fire Station used to be used for police bulk storage. And, and years ago, we decided to, to sell that and get rid of it with, with the idea that we would consolidate and try to get police all in one location. So, uh, that was, I don't know how many years ago, but it's, it's been several. We, we've been putting stuff down at Fleet, um, for years now, e, even exposed to the weather. We, we do rent space as well. And so, uh, we are at a point where, you know, we feel like we've got to do something. And this is the something that we've, we've come up with. So, uh, I know the cost is, it's, it's frustrating, but, um, it, it is, I see that it is a true need.
Ask a question here. Um, there's a thousand dollars between, and I'm just noticing this, and I think, uh, between a local bidder and a out-of-town bidder, not that far out of town, but, and I'm assuming they're going to be using local help probably. Don't we have a consideration when we purchase items of, uh, being a locally purchased item as opposed to a?
It's, it's, it's only for goods.
Okay.
So.
I, I'd kind of like to see us expand that into, into this kind of thing also.
I, I would agree with you, Commissioner Perigin. Uh, when we, when we voted on the, on, on this, but that local bidder preference on goods, I asked that it be considered for other things too, but goods was as far as I could get at that time. It would be great.
I would like to point out though, that some of the local contractors that you think are local, their headquarters are not actually inside the city limits. So that's another thing to think about.
That was one of the arguments then, and it makes sense. I think we can build rules around that, uh, as to how we determine who is and who isn't local.
Warren County local, or do you want to make city limits local? It would be up to you all, but.
Currently the.
Have to go wide.
I'd say Warren County.
City limits.
Yeah.
Currently, the definition of local business is a business entity that is registered to do business in the city and has established physical place of business when this, within the city limits. The location of the business must be properly zoned, um, must have an actual physical address. The business entity must not have any delinquent property taxes, net profit fees, or occupational withholdings owed to the city and, or have any outstanding liens or fines due to the city. And the business entity must have paid property taxes, net profit fees, or employee withholdings to the city during the previous fiscal year of not less than twenty-five hundred dollars. That's our current definition. So if we wanted to expand that, we would need to also amend the definition. Um, I think our original intent was for a business who is paying property taxes, who is paying net profit fees, who is in the city limits, for local. Um, and it is strictly only for goods and materials. Uh, that's a very easy apples-to-apples comparison when we're doing competitive sealed bidding. When we expand that beyond just goods or materials, we're now opening it up to more subjective review information because a construction project isn't necessarily an apples-to-apples bid. So those are some other things to think about, uh, and, and not to sway one way or the other, but just to provide the facts of, of what we have available to us. Marilyn, Perigin, our procurement manager had done some research on local preference. Um, there's a national, um, public procurement association. They do not recommend local preference. They feel it, uh, impacts competitive bidding. They feel like if you're going to strictly go local, or if you have that local preference, then you impede more competitive base bidding. And you may end up paying more in the long run for projects because you're now basically staying local. Um, and then also, when she did some other research, um, Franklin, Kentucky, Henderson, Lexington, Nicholasville, and Owensboro do not have local preference. Uh, and then there are some other entities that she looked at that were out of state, but those are, are, um, entities similar to our size.
I wouldn't be a proponent of strictly going local at all. I think it needs to be competitive, but it's just, it's a thousand dollars. It's a, you know?
But when you use the term local, what about car dealerships that has a dealership here and one in Lexington? And we buy the car from Le, uh, the Lexington dealership? Is there a relationship there that should be of concern when we use the word or the term local?
If we had a local entity, whether it's, um, Leachman, Buick, uh, GMC, or Toyota, Bowling Green, if any of them actually bid for a car, they would get what's considered a credit against their total. So their total in comparison would be reduced by a certain dollar value. That's the local preference provided, uh, to that company. And so if a bid was twenty thousand dollars, their local preference amount might be, um, they get a nine hundred and seventy-five dollar, um, clearance. So if the next bid that came in out of Lexington was also twenty thousand dollars, then the local preference for the local company would mean they have the lowest bid because they're going to get that nine seventy-five as a comparison number to reduce their total cost. We're going to pay twenty thousand, but in comparison, to figure out who has the lower bid, that's where the local preference comes into play.
Construction company owns, uh, a business in Bowling Green, Warren County. And owns a construction business in, in another city, nearby city. What, what happens there? If that company outside of Warren County wins a bid, but it is owned by a corporation, a company locally?
As long as they have a bit, place of business within the city of Bowling Green, right now, they would, they could be considered as a local business.
That's only on goods right now.
Right, that's only on goods right now.
I understand, I understand.
I didn't mean to get us off track. We're here to talk about this facility. It was just an observation that I just was curious about. We can have this conversation on a, you know, on another time and maybe improve that. Sorry, I got, totally got us off track, Chief.
Oh, not a problem. Thank you.
Well, I don't know where I am or not. I'm still thinking about this building. We're not going to have any restroom facilities in it. We will have electricity. You gotta have that.
Some limited electricity, yes, sir.
Are the bays going to be paved or just rock or concrete or what?
Um, there's a concrete floor for the entire facility that they build on top of.
Uh, that's all I've got right now.
I think we're all having sticker shock, but that's not my question. Uh, my, my question is, uh, uh, a frustration that I have about government myself and that those that I talk to have about government is that sometimes we underbuild when we know, w, we can see the future, but we don't build for the future. You know, when we see the expansion of a road and it's only going one more lane and we know in ten years, we're going to have to work on that road again. My question is, are we building this police evidence storage building?
Undersized.
Undersized because we already own the property. Are we trying to make our need fit what we already have? Which if it, we, we're spending one point two million on it today, is another commission in the future going to have to spend another one point two million in the short term? Clearly, evidence storage is going to continue to go on. It's going to expand like everything else does. But are we making a good decision about what we're building today, keeping price in mind? But, but for the sake of this argument, talking only about, are we building a big enough facility for what we need? Or are we building a facility that fits the land that we already own?
Uh, I'm not convinced we're underbuilding. I think we have built a, uh, or we have recommended and designed a facility that does fit on the available property. But I do think it also meets current and some, uh, expected future needs. The, we have, uh, although there's no guarantee, we have a fairly predictable number of cars that we maintain, um, in terms of evidence, right? Because most of the time, there's a, as a practical matter, no agency can hold on to every car that it takes in for evidence. And so we have to be, work with the prosecutor's office to make sure that that piece of evidence is valuable for that case and that we have the ability. Now, with a, with a ten-bay, uh, facility, that will allow us obviously to store up to ten vehicles, uh, in, in unique, isolated, uh, bays. If we ever overflow and, and the, the likelihood of overflow in the near future is pretty small. But if we ever did, we can still do what we're doing today and temporarily rent a space anticipating getting rid of some of those other cars in the future. Right now, we're at six or seven. And so we're, we're not, we don't take them in often enough for us to anticipate there to be ten cars in our possession, twelve cars in our possession in the near future, although clearly that's a possibility. Um, in all likelihood, a lot of the cars we get, we get them, we process them. For instance, in collisions, we'll have those cars in our possession for a short period of time. They do have evidentiary value. We do have to store them temporarily, but we get rid of those pretty quickly as evidence goes. And so I don't, I don't foresee a high, high demand for something beyond ten bays currently. The bulk part of this, that corner of the L, is not quite three times more space than we currently have for the conditioned bulk, uh, evidence that we have. And so we're, we've been in this space, this temporary space for about six years. The day we moved in, we probably were two-thirds full of that space, half to two-thirds full in that space. So you can see the relative growth of that. So if you can extrapolate that, I would say we're talking about a fifteen-to-twenty-year, uh, anticipation to fill this current space at almost three times as large as our current available space to us.
Taking into account how much we already have.
Correct. That is correct.
So would we be giving up the rental space that we're currently using? Or is this? We would, and how much savings would that get us?
It's not a great deal, I think, and, and, uh, Major Edwards, who's in the back of the room, can tell me. But I think we're spending a hundred dollars a month on that storage space, times two, right? So there's, um, it's not extraordinary, but the, there's, there's an additional problem. They're out of sight, out of our direct control. We don't like doing that. It does provide that storage and it is secure, but it's off-site. It's, it doesn't have our full attention and oversight.
Are any revenue associated at all with this?
Uh, zero.
But we have requirements at the state level for how long we have to hold on to evidences?
Uh, the records retention, and this falls under that. Some of our evidence, um, in particular on our felonies, our homicides, um, we've got evidence from nineteen seventy-two in the late sixties and early seventies that we still have in our custody and care that are, that drive some of this need. Because I, I could be corrected, but it's either eighty or ninety years that we have to hold on to evidence directly associated with certain felonies. So, yeah, the, 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 the demand continues to grow.
And was this an evaluated bid? Cause typically, I feel like if it's an evaluated bid, we, it, she includes sort of what we were evaluating the different bids against and?
This was not an evaluated bid. It was a straight low price.
But the specs were.
They had to meet specifications.
They had six hundred pages of specs they had to meet, so.
I've, I've already talked to you, Doug, and other people, and I appreciate the research that you've done and tried to make it. I can't pay a hundred and forty dollars a square foot for a garage. I just can't do it. And, and I understand what the bids are and I, and I know that, that people have worked hard to, to make it work. And it's extraordinarily convenient to have it out the back door. And we got to do something. I just don't think this is the right thing. And again, I can always be four to one, but I just, I'm, I'm having trouble with this one. It just, uh, just beyond when we budget, when our projected budget was right at a million and the bid came in a third over that, and even after discussion, it's still a quarter over that. You know, you can understand, you know, in commercial what it means. But this is OSB board walls. There's no plumbing. There's no drains in the, in the flooring. It's just really four brick wa, uh, brick walls on the outside and four walls and a garage door, ten times. And it's.
I mean, I, I certainly understand your position. A, a couple of things that I don't know that we've discussed, but probably worth reiterating is, and, and Mr. Maslow or, or, uh, Ms. Sheller Ward can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, I don't think we're talking about financing this. I think we have the money on hand. We certainly have an, some money carrying over from this budget if we do it. Um, and I've, I've been told that there is some underspending capture that we can apply toward this project perhaps. And so, um, I understand the sticker shock as, as Commissioner Nash has talked about, but, um, the need doesn't go away, right? There is, there, we, we will have to continue to search for a solution. And there is, I mean, there's any number of alternate solutions, none of which, um, allow us to have this fully contained on our property where we can have full oversight, where we can have full control, where our security system can, can be a part of this. Um, and we can certainly look at alternatives if, if, if that's what we ultimately decide. I just, um, I'm afraid the price will never go down. That's, that's my concern is that two years, five years from now, instead of building a one point three million dollar project, we're talking about a one point five million dollar project. And nobody can predict that, but I've never seen construction costs dramatically go down year on year. So that's my concern.
And there's nothing about the specs since it was, uh, not an evaluated bid. It was a straight bid. There were six hundred pages, uh, or so about meeting the specs. There's nothing in those specs that seems unreasonable as it comes to protecting, collecting, and preserving evidence.
As a matter of fact, and I think Mr. Maslow spoke to it, I think we, we did our very best to, uh, reduce the specifications of this project to, to cut out as much cost as we can. This is by and large a fairly simple, straightforward project. It's, it is, there's no amenities, right? There is no frills in this project. And, um, uh, Mike Carroll from Branstad Carroll, the architects that designed this facility, he can speak to the design and, and, and our challenges moving, you know, forward with this project in terms of cutting costs. I don't think, between the conversation we had with the construction companies, which were represented, uh, by three different companies, and their ideas they brought to the table for cost cutting in terms of the design of this facility, we cut out everything they told us to cut out, which was exchanging plywood, which was a more expensive product, for an OSB product. They're similar, but not the same and certainly not the same. for an OSB product, they're similar but not the same, and certainly not the same cost. And then, um, there was a finish on the garage doors that was a powder coat finish, which increased dramatically the cost of the garage doors, we, we eliminated that in favor of the basic finish, which does not add any cost to the door itself. Um, that's where we got our 75 to 80,000 dollar savings over the original bids. And it, and it's probably important to note that these three companies had two opportunities to bid this, right? They, they knew what they all bid the first time, right? So, they all sort of started out on the same playing field, knowing what the first bids were, and they came back and rebid it, and this is where we are now. So, I, I, I'm afraid we can't, if we're going to build the building we're talking about, I don't see this building getting less expensive.
Was any, I know you want it really close, and I get that, and that probably makes a lot of sense from a resource standpoint, that you're going to be using to watch over that. Is there any, was there any preliminary look at empty warehouse space that's around town?
Um, that's obviously something we could look at, but the, but the problem, as you'd mentioned, is the majority of our small evidence is onsite, right? We want that under our control, we want that under our security, we want that under our camera system, we want all of those security features on this property because it is evidence. Currently, we don't have that benefit, ah, with some of this type of evidence. And so, um, just as a good, being a good steward of this, ah, evidence that's in our possession, this property that's in our possession, um, we want it onsite, right? That's one of the benefits of using that back lot, that we don't have to buy property and we don't have to rent space, and we don't have to modify others' people's property. And so, um, we, we haven't frankly gone out and tried to look for warehouse space because it would require a significant amount of, um, renovation even to do that properly, and so, then we're improving somebody else's property at, at still significant cost, and it made sense for us to build this on our property because of all of those benefits that we talked about, and we don't have to buy land, so...
I don't disagree with you. Evil doers probably don't want to do their evil doings at the police station.
Yeah, I'll give you one example, and I don't know if this is pertinent, but I think it is. We had a, we had a car we had seized that had evidence in the car, and we stored it where we store most of our evidence-related vehicles, and this was probably going to be a car that was held for short-term. Because it was not secure beyond a fenced-in lot, um, overnight, we had, ah, an unknown person, still don't know, break in, break into the car, steal the evidence out of the car that we had not collected because we hadn't gotten a search warrant yet, and so, we lost evidence in a criminal case because we don't have a secure facility, secure enough facility for these vehicles.
Which is both to the detriment of the accused and the victim.
Agreed.
I mean, it, it, the, the preservation of evidence is, is not a one-sided street, and, and while I'm having sticker shock, there, to, to preserve evidence for both the accused and, and the victim, um, I mean, clearly, money always has to be considered, ah, but this is too important, ah, I believe, ah, to, to, to haggle over, I just, you know? What I hear is that, ah, we've taken a shot at it, and we took another shot at it, and then we met with people about it, ah, who made suggestions, and we implemented those suggestions, and now we're here at what, at 1.2 million. If you are the accused or a victim of a crime, and you think that the maintaining of that evidence is what's going to bring a just outcome, I don't think any of those people are going to have sticker shock over 1.2 million, or, or a hundred and forty dollars a square foot.
Your architect is here?
Yes, sir.
Where?
Carroll.
Can you come, come up to the mic, please? Just one question, sir.
Sir.
Have we done all we can to get the price down as low as we can based on what you see, ah, for this project?
Mr. Denning, I believe we have, ah, we are in a, a construction situation right now across country where, as, as Mr. Nash said, he's got sticker shock, we've all got sticker shock when we open bids these days. This is, as Chief said, a very, very simple building. There's not any frills in this building to be removed from it, um, there's no, there's no heating, there's very limited plumbing, there's enough electricity, there's ventilation, and that's it. It's a wood-framed building with a brick facade, it's, you can't build it any cheaper than that.
And it brings up the question that Commissioner Nash asked earlier, ah, is the building undersized? And when is the next move you would have to make to bring it up to par to accommodate our needs?
I would defer to Chief Hawkins on that subject because it's his department, but I would confer with him the, and, and Mr. Nash, the concern for evidence. I mean, that chain of custody, when you're dealing with evidence in, in the justice system, is, is integral to the operations of a police department. And if you've never been into their police department and seen what they've got, it's, you know, it's something that needs to be addressed. The control of evidence is just, is, is, is ultimate in, in this case.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carroll? Can you help us understand why the, the, um, proposed budget was so far off?
No, sir, I cannot. I, I, it, it goes back to what I said initially, the, the economic condition of our country now, particularly in the construction industry, we haven't, we haven't opened a bid in the last four months that wasn't over the money, over the budget that we had estimated it, you know, several months prior to that. I think the bids that you received, I mean, to ha, to be, to have two bidders within $800 of each other on a 1.2 million dollar project is almost unheard of. I mean, and, and even given the second chance for one to come in and under the other one and to, to cut their bids, they're, they're where they need to be. I mean, they're where, they're where the market is, I should say, Mayor. You know, it's, we, we have, we have jobs that bid today with only one or two subcontractors bidding subcontract because there's, there's so much work to go around. And I concurrently also agree with the chief, we don't know that that's going to come down, we, we don't believe that it is going to come down at all. Um, it's, it's going to be the market until we hit harder times in, in our economic condition.
Is this a project that's too big for the small guys, but too small for the big guys?
Ah, no, I would say, I would say this is a, it's a good-sized project. I mean, you've got the bidders that I would expect to bid this project in, in this market. I mean, we opened, I can give you an example, we opened bids for an airport hangar a couple of weeks ago that was 7,800 square feet, and a hangar, metal building, the bids came in at 1.2 million dollars for an 8,000-square-foot hangar, metal building, very little facade, it did have restrooms, you know? Our estimate was $750,000 on that.
It's still a swallow, thank you.
It's, it's, it's sticker shock is what it is, but, okay?
Victims of prosperity.
Victims of prosperity, that's a good way to address it. Thank you.
Questions? Lord, I'm afraid I'm still a no, I just, we've got to be creative to look at some other issues, some other method of, of doing this, it's... We had other projects upcoming that if they're going to come in the same way, we're not going to be able to do either, so, I don't know.
Regardless of outcome, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions ahead. Comments? Please call, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Um, I'm just curious if you, as the mayor, sort of have reservations, and you want us to look at other options? I, I feel like those comments make it seem like there are other, are other options? And so, then I feel, um, like this vote is premature if there are other options to explore. And I don't really know what our options are at this point, um, so I just need a little bit of clarification, are, are there other options? Because you seem to feel like there are. So, can we wait to explore those for a week, till our next meeting, or what are our options?
You all could table this, and we could study other options.
I don't know that there's any other option if you're going to put it on this site. The other options would be, and other buildings...
Other options would be, have to be offsite.
And you, you, you effectively have, I mean, there's limited options, you, you can build offsite, right? You can build a, a facility to meet the need offsite, which I think would then increase the cost if you use this design. Um, if you have to go back to redesign, you're obviously adding cost to what we've already spent. Um, we could renovate somebody else's warehouses, as Commissioner Perrigen has said, we can, we can continue to rent space, or even buy space for that matter, right? Buy an existing building and renovate, I have no idea what the cost would be of renovating an existing facility to, um, meet our needs. Um, we, we did discuss, what if, one of the initial discussions in all of this, how to reduce cost, was what if we just build this huge steel structure, right? Effectively a warehouse. Because there is a need for the integrity of evidence, you have to segregate evidence, right? You still have to put them in unique, undisturbable conditions, right? If you have a car and evidence, you want it to be unreachable by everybody who may go into those other car bays. And so, then if you do that, if you do it right, right? This is a, this is a conversation about doing it right, not doing it like we're currently doing it in some cases. And, and so, then you have to create a segregated model inside of whatever steel structure, warehouse kind of structure, um, that we're talking about. And so, it's like building a building inside of a building, right? Because you're going to have to create these segregated bays that do not, ah, have a probability of being able to penetrate them. And we, we looked at those, right? We looked at, we are, we are already in the, using storage space not intended for its purpose and renting, in limited cases, some offsite storage for vehicles. That's not an ideal solution. To build offsite, I don't think is an ideal solution because we have to buy a land or, or do major renovations to another piece of property, which is why we've sort of come to where we are. We own the land, we can design a building specifically to meet the needs that we have, to anticipate future needs and growth, and have the advantages of oversight, of security, of camera systems, and all of those aspects. And so, building offsite doesn't seem like the right, ah, move. Renting and renovating, that's an unknown cost, we could look at it, but frankly, I don't know, without a design, I don't know that we can even guess what costs would be to renovate a rental space, um, to buy an existing building and renovate, same challenges with renovating rental space. And so, we, we have circled back multiple times to this building onsite, having all the advantages of having it under our direct control, and there's a cost associated with that, and that's sort of where we come to tonight. Our recommendation is to do this. Are there other solutions? There are other solutions that I don't think meet our needs, right? Anything is a, any other solution than I think what we're recommending is a compromise in the security and the integrity of evidence, and so, we're going to have to decide what's more important in that conversation, and, you know, if we want to continue to do what we're doing, we can do that, we'll, we'll, we'll piece together more space if we have to, um, but we're not doing as good a job as I would like to, and in order to do it right, I think it needs to be on our site, and I think that's where we've come all the way, full circle a couple of times in our internal conversations, our conversations with staff, and our conversations with the, the architects is that we feel like this is the best solution, and we know it's expensive, but we still feel like it's the best solution.
Thank you. Ah, for me, whenever there is a hard topic before us, what I always go back to is the vow that I made to the citizens, which is to protect the constitutional rights of all of our citizens. And part of our constitutional rights are that we have a right to due process, and so, I feel like, um, what you're sort of explaining is that not having a secure site for evidence really may have an impact on, on due process for our citizens, and really having what they need to be able to be proven innocent or guilty. So, I'm, I'm still just a little bit confused because I know your background is in law enforcement, and so, I just, I'm sure you have a high regard for, um, you know, evidence storage, and so, I'm just, I'm still not understanding why you would, um, if you feel like there are other options where we can really secure evidence, are you saying that? There are other options that we can securely? Yes. Okay.
What are they, Mayor? What are they?
Talked about looking for a location, and are they...
So, are you saying that we would pick a different location and add security cameras and things like that, or?
Those are the details that would have to be worked out, but I think it, no problem is insurmountable.
Have we looked at other properties?
Not specific properties, only because there were unknown costs associated with renovation, and, you know, that, as you know, the property availability changes regularly, so, we'd have to get serious about buying or renting other property before I think that mattered.
Yes, I asked the wrong question. We considered building on other properties and made a determination that was not the best thing to do.
Internally, we can, made that consideration, yes, sir.
Thank you. We have an investment in the design work currently?
Do.
The thing that bothers me, I guess, when you talk about something outside is the fact, we have three major contractors here in this area, ah, that has bid on this project. Mr. Carroll has said, hey, I can't think of anything else that you're going to get it down any lower, ah, it's going to cost more in the future, ah, to build the same building. I don't know that we can do any better. What, what do we have? We have a motion and a second on the floor?
But I, I just want to, before we vote, to me, if we're spending this much money, and there's one of us that feels like there might be some other options, I'm hesitant to go ahead and vote if we just need to gather a little bit more information to either show that, look, this is the lowest amount of money we're going to spend, or, um, there is in fact another option. And so, I would like to ask you, Katie, in terms of as our chief financial officer, if you think financially there'd be, that that would be an okay, or financially, it would, it would be who of us to look at that from a finance standpoint from our city, or if you feel like that would just cost more of us money in the end to not go ahead and vote and move forward?
I can't really answer that question, not knowing what options, what other facilities, what other property could be available, because we have no idea what the cost of that property would be. We do have money available now to take care of this 1.2 million dollar project without financing it. It would take, I'm just going to estimate, it wouldn't be a week or two weeks before we could find out if there's other locations available and how much that's going to cost, and then figure out renovations. We would be looking at probably months, ah, several weeks at least, ah, to look at that. My recommendation, um, if, just out of due respect, would be to, to do something about this particular bid so that these contractors are not left in limbo. So, either vote it up or vote it down. You can certainly table it, but I don't know tabling it two weeks is really going to get us much time to, to answer your question.
And the price of these other options just went up.
Right.
I'll just say that.
The downside of public discussion.
Absolutely.
Transparency comes with the price.
Please call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Beasley Brown? Yes. Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Chief, you.
Where are we?
Number 12.
Well, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Municipal order, 2019-104.
Municipal order approving revisions to the employee medical benefit plan for employees of the city of Bowling Green.
Go move.
Second. Commissioner Perrigen, second by Nash, Mr. Maslow.
Okay, back on healthcare, we, ah, have to do adjustments from time to time to our healthcare plan, and we've done roughly 16 changes over the years, whether that be to the plan itself, ah, or to premiums, but, ah, today, we bring before you, ah, some proposal, some proposed... some proposed changes in, in premiums. And I'll let Lori get up and I guess if, if possible, quickly cover, uh, what we're proposing to change on the healthcare premiums. Lori?
Again. Um, as discussed in the budget presentation this year, we're recommending to adopt changes to the employee medical benefits plan premiums effective July 1st. That will be for the fiscal year 2020. Currently, the premiums for the city as the employer, from the city as the employer through position budgeting and from employees through payroll deductions are budget, are budgeted to cover most of the claims, most of claims only, sorry. And the claims include like our medical prescription dental and vision claims. The reason for this is because in the past, the healthcare fund has maintained a surplus and hasn't always required full funding. This is not the case presently. As the healthcare fund is not able to fully pay for the expenses of claims, it has to also not be, I am sorry, of claims, it is also not able to cover the cost of the fixed administrative costs. And those fixed costs are like your consulting fees, your third-party administrator, TPA admin fees, care here admin fees, operating costs, and wellness incentives. In fiscal year 2019, to reduce the shortfall, the city increased the amount of employer premiums, but did not adjust the employee premiums. Two recommendations are being made to cover the expenses of both claims and administrative costs moving forward. During budget meetings early this spring, it was noted that the ratio of employer to employee premiums have fallen, and the committee recommends there be an adjustment for the fiscal year 2020 to improve that ratio. The proposed new premiums for 20, fiscal year 2020 are for employee only, $10.77, that's per paycheck, which is an increase, increase of $5.23 per paycheck for, for employees. The employee plus one is an increase of $5.92, and employee plus family, uh, is the biggest increase of $8.27. That total increase in employee premiums amounts to approximately 86,000 more to the healthcare fund for fiscal year 20, and an increase of 245,000 from the employer premium. While the employer portion of premiums for claims is not being recommended for an increase, we are proposing to add to position budgeting to cover the budgeted amount of fixed costs attributed to the plan for the previously mentioned fixed costs, those non-claims expenses. Over the course of the next few years, we will be recommending that amount be gradually added to the proposed 95-5 employer employee split, but this year we'll be absorbing it on the employer side, side, only while we catch up on the premiums to cover the claims. No other plan design changes are being recommended for fiscal year 20 at this time, but may be considered for January 2020. You have any questions about, for me?
Questions?
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-105.
Municipal order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Brianna Court in the Gary property subdivision.
Go move.
Second.
Perigin, second by Nash.
Brianna Court is the cul-de-sac that's been recently added out in Gary Farms, and construction is complete. Planning is owning and city staff have gone out and inspected. Uh, it's roughly 0.07 miles long, and it's about 800 linear feet of sidewalk and associated sewer. Uh, everything looks good, and we recommend acceptance of the, of that street cul-de-sac.
Any comments or questions?
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2019-106.
Municipal order accepting donation from John and Linda Kelly Family Charitable Foundation to expand the scope of services of Camp Happy Days.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Perigin, Mr. Mazel.
Mr. and Mrs. Kelly have been giving to, uh, our program for a number of years. I think going back, all the way back to 2008, uh, they are, uh, offering us $21,000 again for the Camp Happy Days. Uh, this is an extraordinary, uh, act of generosity by the, the Kellys, and we very much appreciate it. Uh, and this is their 12th year of giving to the city for this program. And I just want to thank, thank them for their generosity and, and their, uh, contribution to Parks and Rec, uh, program and all that they do for us. And, and round of applause, I think is in order.
Great family with a big heart. Mm-hmm. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2019-107.
Municipal order approving appropriations for specified eligible agencies for fiscal year 2020.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Denning, Mr. Mazel.
This is the list of agency appropriations that you all agreed upon, uh, with the budget. Uh, the only change that you all recommended was the change to the Human Rights Commission. We have increased their amount to 75,000 as requested. All others were according to what we presented in the budget. And, uh, Katie is here if you have any specific questions to any of these, but, uh, ask for your approval of these.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal, or excuse me, first reading of ordinance BG 2019-30.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 11.75 acres of property located on US 31W Connector Road from Kelly Road to the CSX Railroad, owned by the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and 20.53 acres of right-of-way for a total of 32.28 acres, with said territory being contiguous to existing state limits.
Go move.
Second.
Perigin, second by Denning, Mr. Mazel.
Uh, Ben Peterson is here if you have any questions on this.
Patient of just portion of right-of-way, so. Any comments or questions for Mr. Peterson?
Sorry, Brent. Brent or Ben?
I think Joe Plunt, District 3's engineer is here too. It's his property. Now, this is CSX. We're getting you next. I guess it is.
I really hate to pass up on an opportunity to ask Ben a question, but I don't have one on this particular round.
Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG 2019-31.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number three to the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual operating budget for fiscal year 2019.
Go move.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash, Mr. Mazel.
As you know, we have to, uh, make adjustments to our budget throughout the year. This is the third and final, uh, budget amendment, we think, we know, uh, don't have any choice for FY19. Uh, getting money to where it needs to be, different funds, uh, taking in new funds, uh, booking the budget for that. Uh, Katie is here to answer any questions you have, uh, on these amendments to the budget and all these various funds.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2019-24.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 5.58 acres from AG Agriculture and HB Highway Business to HB Highway Business, located at Zero Orange Court, presently owned by DKB Investments Incorporated, care of, been spickered with Bronson Spears as contract vendor.
Second.
Perigin, second by Beasley Brown. This is a second reading of an ordinance that was presented last time, but unanimous recommendation from the planning commission. Are there any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, second reading of ordinance BG 2019-25.
Ordinance adopting annual city budget. Ordinance adopting the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual operating budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending July 30th, 2020, by estimating revenues and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. This is second reading of our budget and our third time hearing it. Is there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, or excuse me, second reading of ordinance BG 2019-26.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedules. Ordinance admitting to classification pay schedules G for general classified, D for department head management, and U for unclassified part-time employees, and authorizing pay increases for fiscal year 2020.
Go move. Motion by Nash, second by Denning. Again, second reading. We've had an opportunity to review it. Are there any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2019-27.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 26.94 acres of property located at 4031 Old Scottsville Road, presently owned by the Club at Old Stone LLC, with said territory being contiguous to existing state limits.
Go move.
Second.
Perigin, second by Nash. Again, a second reading of a voluntary annexation. Are there any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, second reading of ordinance BG 2019-28.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 2.995 acres of property located on a portion of 830 Cumberland Trace Road, presently owned by the Warren County School Board, with said territory being contiguous to existing state limits.
I got, motion by Denning, second by Perigin. Again, another second reading of a voluntary annexation. It's just a strip of land that's part of the school property behind Cumberland Trace. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Last voting item on our session. Next, we have a presentation, uh, to the Metropolitan Planning Organization Transit Evaluation by Michael Baker International. We sure can, because it's going to take him a minute to get things together. We'll be back in five minutes.
Wait until the end, or ask questions now?
You're welcome to ask questions now. I think we're going to go into a little more detail in a second, but what's your question?
It's an overall question. Is WKU on board with what we're discussing here tonight?
They have been very active in all of our transportation committees. Yeah, they're on board with wherever we're going.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. The next kind of step over is a full merger with two service packages. So this is where the city and Western Kentucky University either directly hire or contract a full operations manager, general manager, finance administration manager, and then you have two different service deliveries underneath. So what that would mean is this contractor would operate the service, two different services, maybe two different branded services, but they would run out of the same operation. There's some opportunities for consolidation and maintenance facilities and stuff like that there. One step closer to a full merger with one service package is essentially the same thing, but you no longer have Topper Transit and GoBG. You'd have general manager and finance and operations all operating one transit service funded and contracted by two different entities. And then the last service package is a transit authority formation. This is essentially creating a whole new entity to operate both transit services with a board structure that is appointed by Western Kentucky University and the city of Bowling Green. So that creates kind of an autonomous entity that can be moved forward with the direction of board members. So if there are any questions on those structures, I can answer those right now. Otherwise, I'm going to pass it off to Toby to discuss some of our recommendations and findings.
Thanks. We'll say one thing about a transit authority. One of the biggest differences between a transit authority and this full merger with one service package is that you would end up with a separate board of directors, contracts from the city to that board of directors, contracts from WKU to that board of directors. But another big shift would be that the federal recipient, the federal funding recipient, could be transferred from the city to that board of directors. So they could receive the federal funds directly and be directly responsible for those federal funds. And then the city would be a local funding partner or be the matching funds for those federal funds. I've been involved in a lot of transit consolidations and mergers over the years, some that have worked and some that don't work. Generally, the things that I tell people that consider mergers is, from a business point of view, they make all the sense in the world. You end up reducing administrative costs. So you can save administrative money. You can put that administrative money back into your service or potentially have it to offset expenses or reduce the money that has to be put into the service to begin with. But there's always challenges in figuring out the political side of how you potentially work forward. And we sat down with the group early and identified what are some of the critical issues or major concerns that would have to be considered. And these were seven of them that were identified. Funding and how you deal with equitable funding for service received, what the funding sharing arrangement will be with WKU and the city, how you deal with governance and how you deal with direct oversight. Right now, the city has direct oversight and direct governance control. WKU has direct oversight and control of their service, but when you share that, then things can get a little murky. Fair structure, Topper Transit's free on campus, GoBG has a cash fair, how you deal with fair structure, how you make fair what you charge for service work for the community and for the students. And then how you ultimately make service and then make other decisions relative to purchasing, to where vehicles are going to be maintained, all those things are all issues that people have to be willing to share or cooperate on to make something like this work. There's certainly equipment differences. There's technology differences. And then there's service mission differences. And it was very clear, you've got WKU's service, Topper Transit, which has a mission of delivering service to the students on campus, and then GoBG, which has a mission of delivering service to people in the community. And there are different missions. So that's one of the things that would have to be sorted out, figure out what's the mission of a new organization or potentially a new service. That's one of the reasons that we presented some options. If you wanted to look at merging the management of the service, it still may make sense to have service delivered separately if you want to have them be focused on separate missions. Terms of findings and recommendations, with a series of shorter term things that we think make a lot of sense, there's a bunch more that we'll have identified in the report, but these are some of the highlights. We believe that the city needs to do more direct oversight on the finances of the transit service, specifically because there's federal funds, there's also city funds in it. I think it makes sense to do a cost allocation review and make sure there's a cost allocation plan in place for all the costs going into the service. We believe the city should change the basis for paying. Most transit systems, when they bid out service or public agencies, when they bid out service for transit, they bid their service out and develop or bid it out based upon a cost per hour of service. So you have so many hours of service that the buses are out there running, and people bid on that cost per hour of service, and you multiply that by the number of hours, and that gets you your annual cost. And then you can control costs by either adding, you can control costs by adding hours or reducing hours, but you don't have to review detailed invoices and approve detailed invoices of everything that was purchased to make up that cost per hour, because you're doing that when you approve the bid, when you issue your RFP. It'll make it simpler for the contractor. It'll make it simpler for the city to review and approve invoices, and it'll also make it simpler to illustrate to the federal government what you're paying for.
And you're saying that the cost of service, whatever we're invoicing for, they're invoicing us for now, is included prior to the issuance of the contract on a per hour basis?
Yes. It gets rolled up into a per hour basis, and that's what they bid on then.
Okay.
And you'll see that detail in the procurement. So that gets worked out in the procurement. You negotiate that upfront. So if they bid $65 an hour, and then another bidder comes in and bids $64 an hour, and then you can look and compare apples to apples because they're bidding on what you've put out in your procurement. You can also negotiate that. And then if you want to add more service, you know exactly what it costs per hour to add more service.
Can you take it from another perspective?
Sure.
And that is, is it reasonable to put out that we're willing to, and I'm making up numbers, but we're willing to pay $50 an hour? And what are you willing to provide for $50 an hour reimbursement?
Sure, you could do that, and then they could come back and bid on what services they could provide for $50 an hour. It's not so much the amount of service they would provide for $50 an hour, it's what they could provide you for $50 an hour. So they might come back and say, we can do all that, but we don't want to take the risk on fuel, for example, or we don't want to take the risk on insurance. So if the city pays for insurance and fuel separately, we might be able to make it work for $50 an hour, those kinds of things. And by the way, there's lots of other details that you can work with when you bid things out to reduce risk, just like you can when you bid a building out. And contractors have to look at your bid package, and they make decisions on what's the risk that they have to put in when they put their bid price together. You do the same thing when you bid out transit service. There's various things that can add or detract risk. Fuel costs, things that are variable in the year. If you can take those things out, especially if you can build them into municipal fuel pools and things like that, you can help to reduce, take those risk factors out, and then you get more stable cost per hour bids. In terms of management, we also think that the city needs to take or improve the way they manage and have financial controls on their contractor. So make it clear what the city wants to have decision-making authority in, make it clear for the contractor what they have decision-making authority in, build that into your contract going in so it's really clear, and the contractor then knows what they can do, and the city has authorized those things upfront. And then if there's things that the city wants to be involved in in decision-making, put that in your procurement so that then there's a mechanism to have that discussion with the contractor throughout the year. The city should develop a management plan with clear roles and responsibilities for federal grants. So the city should know what roles, responsibilities it's going to take on to manage the federal grant, to meet the requirements of federal grant, and what it expects its contractor to do, and put that into the procurement or build that into your contract with the contractor. That will help you to avoid, part of what will help you to avoid federal findings in the future, having that kind of a management plan in place. Then you can hold your contractor accountable to make sure they're meeting their portions of that requirement, and then city staff to make sure that they're meeting that portion as well. Then another good thing that I think a lot of cities or communities that I've been involved with in transit over the years do is conduct, I'm calling it a biannual site visit, but they should do some kind of site visit. It could be an annual one, it could be every quarter, but they should have a site visit to the contractor, they're really close here, to review policies, performance, expectations, ridership revenue. Just have like a business meeting with them, go over what our operating costs, maintenance records are, make sure they're in compliance with federal funding. There's checklists for those things. We're going to provide those in the appendices, the reports, some examples of those that can be used in that kind of review. But you can also talk about performance expectations and planning for service and where service is performing well in the community and where the community may desire more service or may have a need for more service that you can then interact on. AJ is going to talk a little more about the service recommendations.
So we looked at service recommendations. Part of this project wasn't specifically to recommend alignment changes or stop changes, but we did do that similar analysis for Western Kentucky, and we had the opportunity to look around the city.
Figure out what's, what's the mission of a new organization or potentially a new service? It's one of the reasons that we presented some options. If you wanted to look at merging the, the management of the service, it still may make sense to have service delivered separately if you want to have them be sep, focus on separate missions. Terms of findings and recommendations, with a series of shorter term things that we think make a lot of sense. There's a bunch more that we'll have identified in the report, but these are some of the highlights. We believe that the city needs to do more direct, direct oversight on the finances of the, of the transit service, specifically because there's federal funds, there's also city funds in it. Think it makes sense to do a cost allocation review and make sure there's a cost allocation plan in place for all the costs going into the service. We believe the city should change the basis for paying. Most transit systems, when they bid out service or public agencies, when they bid out service for transit, they, they bid their service out and develop or bid it out based upon a cost per hour of service. So you have so many hours of service that the buses are out there running and people bid on that cost per hour of service. And you multiply that by the number of hours and that gets you your annual cost. And then you can control costs by either adding, you can control costs by adding hours or, or, or reducing hours. But you don't have to review detailed invoices and approve detailed invoices of everything that was purchased to make up that cost per hour because you're doing that when you approve the, the bid, when you issue your RFP. And it, it'll make it simpler for the ci, it'll make it simpler for the contractor. It'll make it simpler for the city to review and approve invoices. And it'll also make it simpler to, to illustrate to the federal government what you're paying for.
And you're saying that the cost of service, whatever we're invoicing for, they're invoicing us for now, is included prior to the issuance of the contract on a per hour basis?
Yeah, so it gets rolled up into a per hour basis and that's what they bid on then. And you'll see that detail in the procurement. So that gets worked out in the procurement and you negotiate that upfront. So if they bid sixty-five dollars an hour and then another bidder comes in and bids sixty-four dollars an hour and, you know, then you can look and compare apples to apples because they're bidding on what you've put out in your procurement. You can also negotiate that. So, and then if you, if you want to add more service, you know exactly what it costs per hour to add more service.
Can you take it from another perspective?
Sure.
And that is, can, i- is it reasonable to put out that we're willing to, and I'm making up numbers, but we're willing to pay fifty dollars an hour? And what are you willing to provide for fifty dollars an hour reimbursement?
Sure, you could do that and then they could, they could come back and bid on what services they could provide for fifty dollars an hour. It's not so much the, the, it's not so much the amount of service they would provide for fifty dollars an hour. It's what they could provide you for fifty dollars an hour. So they might come back and say, we can do all that, but we don't want to take the risk on fuel, for example. Or, or we don't want to take the risk on insurance. So if the city pays for insurance and fuel separately, we might be able to make it work for fifty dollars an hour, those kinds of things. And by the way, there's all those, lots of other details that you can, you can work with when you bid things out to, to reduce risk, just like you can when you bid a building out. And contractors have to look at your bid package and they make decisions on what's the risk that they have to put in when they put their bid price together. You do the same thing when you bid out transit service. There's various things that can add or detract risk. Fuel costs, things that are, that are variable in the year. If you take, if you can take those things out, especially if you can build them into municipal fuel pools and things like that, you can help to reduce, take those risk factors out and then you get more stable cost per hour bids. In terms of management, we, we also think that the city needs to, needs to take or improve the way they manage and have financial controls on their contractor. So what, make it clear what the city wants to have decision-making authority in. Make it clear for the contractor what they have decision-making authority in. Build that into your contract going in so it's really clear. And the contractor then knows what they can do and the city has authorized those things upfront. And then if there's things that the city wants to be involved in in decision-making, put that in your procurement so that then there's a mechanism to have that discussion with the contractor throughout the year. The city should develop a management plan with clear roles and responsibilities for federal grants. So the city should know what roles, responsibilities it's going to take on to, to manage the federal grant, to meet the requirements of federal grant, what it expects its contractor to do and put that into the procurement or build that into your contract with the contractor. That will help you to avoid, part of what'll help you to avoid federal findings in the future, having that kind of a management plan in place. Then you can hold your contractor accountable to, to make sure they're meeting their portions of that requirement and then city staff to make sure that they're meeting that portion as well. Then another good thing that I think a lot of cities or communities that I've been involved with in transit over the years do is conduct a, I'm, I'm calling it a biannual site visit, but they should do some kind of site visit. It could be an annual one, it could be every quarter. But they should have a site visit to the contractor, they're really close here, to review policies, performance, expectations, ridership revenue. Just have, just have like a business meeting with them. Go over what our operating costs, maintenance records are. Make sure they're in compliance with federal funding. There's checklists for those things. We're going to provide those in the appendices, the reports, some examples of those that can be used in that kind of review. But you can also talk about performance expectations and planning for service and where service is performing well in the community and where it, the community may desire more service or may have a need for more service that you can then interact on. AJ is going to talk a little more about the service recommendations.
So we looked at service recommendations. Part of this project wasn't specifically to recommend alignment changes or stop changes. But we did do that similar analysis for Western Kentucky and we had the opportunity to look around the city. So part of this finding is maybe how we can align GoBG Transit Service to meet some of the needs that were expressed in, in our outreach for that, that effort. We, we're putting a number of findings in the report. First, establishing a set of transit goals, objectives, expectations that really needs to be outlined in a bid package, I think, as well for any contractor. We took a look at this contract versus some other contracts for similarly sized cities and, and there are pages and pages of expectations, route alignments, service times. That might be something that, that could be included with the bid package or, or maybe one of those services where the planning aspect is, is on the city's side as well. We also think this works, the second bullet point is for everything, including right now where you have, you know, just mutual cooperation. You should establish a mobility transit management subcommittee somewhere in Bowling Green. We think it probably fits best under the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Just a regular platform to meet and discuss the needs of Topper Transit and GoBG moving forward, making sure you're hitting all of the service areas in the city. I know we had a community member speak tonight about maybe some needs in the city. Those should probably be discussed at a regular subcommittee meeting throughout, throughout the year. Similarly, improving coordination between Topper Transit and GoBG Service, that's just kind of a given. You already have some cooperation. I think it's important, especially under a subcommittee, to, to make that regular role and responsibility of the contractor. One of the things we really discussed is looking at GoBG Service, there are some, some issues. And we, we weren't tasked with alignment changes, but just as a transit planner, I was frustrated with how it takes three buses to get out to Lever's Lane as well. That might, that might be an issue. So one of the recommendations we have is develop a new service plan. I know you recently went down that path a couple of years ago and there were some issues with that. In looking at that, kind of at a passing glance, I think one of the things that a lot of these plans fail with is community input and buy-in. So while the plan might have not been flawed or bad, it just might have not been accessed by the riders the way you intended to just because they might have not been at the table during the process. So we recommend doing another service plan and alignment change, probably sooner than later because potentially you could get some of that feedback from the public in order to illuminate some things that you might want to put into your bid package for, for the next RFP next year. So that's a recommendation there. Additionally, whatever is procured, whatever management sys, design is out there, regularly in, in systems we work with everywhere, at least every five years, you should just do a transit development plan. Somehow just have someone come in and assess to make sure that the decisions you made five years ago are still valid today. It seems like that's, that's something you guys do here, but just make sure it stays on the radar because five years flies by really quickly. Also, you might want to consider in your, any sort of shared cooperation thing, develop some sort of joint marketing. It was really interesting seeing GoBG's service schedules and WKU's service schedules next to each other. And some of the routes actually are very similar. And I've noticed that some riders don't realize that you can get to similar places on two different services or don't realize that you can use the two different services to get to other parts of the city. So it's worth putting together a joint ride guide, no matter what management framework you go with moving forward. And similarly, you could put a single website or fair structure in place with that. I know one case study we put in there that might be worth looking up for you is, is Lawrence, Kansas. They have a, it's another similarly sized city and huge university town. And they also have two transit services by the university and by the city, but they share a website, share schedules, share everything. There's some cost savings there and it also really helps with eligibility of the system. So those were our service findings and recommendations.
So when we, when you talk, you saw those models earlier and maybe ways to move forward. I'm, I'm a big believer, and I was in charge of public transportation in Pennsylvania, at Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for fourteen years. And I was always a big believer in never remaining still, always trying to move forward, always trying to find ways to improve things. And I also believe, whether you like Walmart or not, I believe that we live in a Walmart society. People expect more for less every day. The residents expect more for less, the riders expect more for less and they're always looking for those rollbacks. And I, I always think that it's, it's really good to constantly look at not just the decisions we've made in the past, but always look forward on ways we can become more efficient. There's always opportunities to become more efficient. And these are some of the steps that you potentially could work forward on. The timing of it, you know, is, is dependent on what the community wants to do. These are longer-term things. But really starting with the city of Bowling Green and WKU working on those issues together, potentially through the MPO, could be a forum for that. Potentially looking at jointly procuring management services together. Looking at manag, managing and delivering service together. A city this size really should have one transit service, probably one transit service brand. And then really look at the way you can deliver, make that transit service work for the community, the students in the best way you can. But you're not there today and you may never get there. It may not be the right thing for this community. So, you know, you may never get to a joint transit authority, but you should always strive to continue to find ways to make improvements. And communication, communication, communication is one of the key ways to get there. That's our, that's our, really our recommendations.
Tell me again what your recommendation was?
So it's to do these short-term things.
Right.
My, my real recommendation is that your one community, there really doesn't make sense to have two different transit services here. You really should work toward finding ways to put them together. But that takes a lot of work to do and it may take a lot of time also to do. So we have a series of potential steps and it starts with, starts with early communication and getting the services to work together. Doing things like improving, doing joint marketing, joint service planning, things like that. And ultimately looking at joint governance, where you can put them, put them together.
Oh, the missions of the two services are different.
I think the missions, the, the missions are something that have to be sorted out. So if you go back to these critical, critical merger issues, those service mission, mission differences, the, the governance issues, those things have to be sorted out. And so you can have a mission that's focused on, and a lot of communities do this. State College in Pennsylvania has a mission to deliver service in the community and a mission to deliver service to university students and it's one system. They can, you can do it that way. Today, your systems aren't structured that way, they're, they're separate.
What, what do you, what did you see in Lawrence, Kansas, University of Kansas?
AJ can talk.
Yeah, I can speak to that. That's really a, a marketing and branding thing. So they still have two separate systems and they're, they're kind of under the mutual cooperation, kind of where you are at now. So that's kind of phase one, low-hanging fruit that you can take care of. If you go to Lawrence Transit, I believe it's dot org, you can see their, their full transit service, which has university service and the city of Lawrence service. They have both logos on there, but the buses are branded the same, the schedules are all the same. And if you go to the university's website and their parking and transportation page, it says, you know, we, here's our shuttle service. And if you click that link, it goes back to the Lawrence page, the, the Lawrence Transit page. So that's, that's just kind of a, you know, within the next year, potentially, things that you can do in order to increase awareness of, of transit services here. Hope that answered your question. I actually want to take a step back and talk about that mission statement too. One of the things I noticed and one of the things I often talk about when I do transit development plans is I ask what the purpose of your transit system is. And often people bring up social service, often people, you know, just bring up mobility. But there's also an economic development component. And when we first started talking here, I didn't hear either of the transit agencies talking about economic development. That is a very real component here, especially given all the assets that the city has with various museums and attractions. And I think potentially there's room for growth in that sector if you add that to your mission and work toward making routes connect more, more of the assets. It connects jobs, it also connects tourists, it connects students to attractions and you could spend more dollars there. I was off, off base. Any other questions?
If, if we've had discussions with Western thus far, could, under our current agreement that we have right now, and I'm interested in exploring other agreements, mergers can be a disaster and I've been through a few that are a disaster, but they don't have to be a disaster, they don't have to be. But most people, when you say merger, they, they think disaster first because they're, they're often done poorly. But they don't have to be. But if you started with just, you, you used a term I use a lot called low-hanging fruit. And if we just took the two maps, and I don't know that this has ever been done, and overlaid them on top of one another, which I've done. I used to have a job where I worked with people who were primarily dependent on, on public transportation. It shocked me every time I did it to see how closely, if not overlapping, they were running together in some areas, which is just double the expense for half the game.
Agree completely. I noticed that with at least two different routes in the system, they're, they're pretty much on top of each other.
Right. And so can we not at least, as we explore these longer-term solutions, and Brent, maybe this is a question for you, is can we not at least do some of the joint marketing, not, not make people have to have two different, and I guess really the only people that would have to have two different would be students because I don't believe the average citizen right now can ride Topper Transit.
And that's not true. The average citizen can jump on any Topper Transit bus free of charge.
Learn something new every day.
Totally free, there's no pass, there's nothing.
And so to think that you have to have two pieces of paper and you've got to try to figure out where all the connections are and get off, if, and get on, why wouldn't we at least just start there? One map.
If you look at the service recommendations, a lot of that's in this, in that service recommendation section. Even developing a joint fare structure, you can have a joint fare structure that meets the federal requirements and have students ride free. Because you can have your fare be that students ride free and then they show a student ID card. And you can have the, so you can even have a free fare zone that's on the university campus. So anybody can ride free on the university campus, there's ways to deal with it. And the service planning, part of the reason we believe, we believe GoBG needs a new service plan. WKU got one as part of the phase one portion of this study. But you'll see that conduct a transit development plan, even if no merger, no consolidation, nothing happens and you keep, retain the two systems separately, they ought to be working together and not doing service planning separately. They ought to do a joint service plan together. And the MPO can be the conduit to make those things or allow, or focus on those things happening. If you form that communications subcommittee, they can begin that dialogue, they'll build trust. And then once they build trust, they can work on planning and do things together.
What are the differences in the missions?
Largely, the mission of, of the, the Topper Transit Service on the university is to deliver service to students, to get students around campus and to get students off-campus services. Although that's being reduced as they, as they contract their service more and more on the campus. The service mission largely of GoBG Service is deliver service to the residents in the community.
But ultimately, I mean, and I hear that, so one, it's deliver services to students and one, it's deliver services to non-students. But the idea is we're supposed to be moving people.
That's right.
And primarily people who either can't move themselves or choose not to move themselves. So I don't see why it would be so radical to think that we couldn't work together. We got to get out of our silos to do so, but.
We agree with you a hundred percent and I think it's just, some of it's a mindset, some of it's the ownership. You know, the university owns that service. The city and their contractor owns the service that is GoBG and that's got their mission that's geared around that and the people that work on that think about it from that mission. But if they, if they can get together and think broader about moving people, you could plan or maybe redesign the service in the region and get something better and meet the mission of both agencies as it is today in a better way.
So can our next step be to put a committee together, Brent? To have a discussion of people from Topper Transit, people from the city that sit down and, and talk about these finding and recommendations?
They were, they were a participant in the study at this point.
They were a part of the committee.
Yeah.
So what, so what is the next step in your opinion?
Listen to, appreciate Toby and AJ with their presentation and their work over the last several months. What you hear is in your procurement, in your goals, in your objectives, in your management, in your finance, like I started this introduction, this is all about big picture management stuff. The city currently doesn't have the capacity or knowledge base to take on that role. I don't think there's a, a desire for us to be in the transit business as, as employees of city, which is fine, I'm perfectly fine with that. We've, we've stayed in this contract model for a number of years. But I think our next step is really looking at the city taking a more active role in the true management of the system. And looking at it from, we would bring in a manager for the transit system, probably through contract. You can contract that service out and really take that on as then, then we have a, an industry professional. We have capacity, we have a person that can then help us bridge those steps and bridge those gaps of moving this forward, really to what this community needs. This conversation is really about what are the future needs of this community? Do the needs of this community change every day? We're going to talk about that, some of that in a minute from a completely different industry. But it changes every day. But we don't have the current capacity and knowledge base to do that type of transit level management.
Those Western.
Western contracts out its management. The drivers are Western employees, I think the mechanics are Western employees, but the management is a private contractor. So it would be looking at something like that, kind of a, if you go back to the models that they showed you earlier, there's that shared management that I'd consider that two B, two A kind of being. Let's look at, how do we address some of the issues that we have? We have deficiencies in our system, we have deficiencies in our management oversight of our contractor. We got dinged by the FTO with that, we're working through those issues. We still have other things to address that we need to kind of get in order. We need the, the strength to do that and then to build that further procurement for the next system to start July 1 of 2020. If you talk to, you know, AJ and, and Toby talked about the revenue hour and all that and your next procurement, and your next procurement, and your next procurement. We need that assistance to help, how do we do those types of procurements? We're used to how we've done things for sixteen years. I inherited this whenever I came to the city in 2010. Tried to make amendments and changes along the way to improve how we handle this, how we model this. But everything's really changed once we went directly underneath the feds and we've had to really reevaluate what it is we're doing. So if you're asking what my recommendation next steps would be, it'd be you all give me support to, to develop an RFP, to hire a contract manager on behalf of the city, to be an agent of the city. Community action would still be the operator, they would still be running the bus system. But that contract manager would help us develop these steps that we need to really build transit for the future of Bowling Green.
And, and we, we have to have that person before we approach Western about printing a joint map?
No, no, those conversations can, can continue in the background, but really it's about building for the future. There's, there could be other things, maybe we, you know, we print a thousand maps and, well, we're, now we're changing the routes. You know, we've, we've done that part of it too. Western is interested.
Well, I know that we're only talking about management, but one of the things I've suggested in community action would never take me up on it is, I don't know why we don't run routes for six months and see how many people ride on them in six months. And if we have a route that nobody's riding on, then that answers the question as to whether or not we continue to run that route. I know we're here to talk about management and not about service delivery, so to speak. But, but, so we print a limited run of maps.
I'm with you.
And we give away a thousand.
Those conversations can continue. There are, there are some of those ancillary conversations that can continue with WKU. We've, we've had good dialogue over the past, but neither one of us is prepared to say, hey, we're just going to jump in this and merge system. You know, we can show a model on the screen and it looks very clean and very crisp, but there are a whole lot of details that have to be worked through in a lot of these things. And what I'm looking for is, is, is somebody to help us as a community, help us as an organization, work through those details.
Please don't think I'm being naive about it. I understand the complicated nature of it. I just want, I, I want to take a, a consultant's recommendation. I just want, I, I want to take a, a consultant's recommendations and actually move on them.
Yeah, and I think that there are some recommendations that they didn't put in here that will be part of the report. I'm going to go ahead and introduce this one. The Google Transit Feed. So that right now WKU has their routes listed on Google. So if you search directions, you can get the car, the little man walking, or person. My apologies, the person, or the bus. The Topper Transit is, you have to have that in a very specific format for Google to make it work. That would be one. So then, everybody just goes to Google to be able to figure out what bus takes you where, and it can program all that. That's one that would be that easy first step type of thing that we could do to, to get on there. That will be in the report. It wasn't in here because that's really an action step, not a management part.
You know, if we do anything, when incoming freshmen are coming in to Western, I can't think of what it's called now.
Gridblitz, or whatever.
They're here for a week before school starts. They, pardon me? Master plan.
Yeah, let's go with that one. I, I, I don't know. Go BG, Community Action would have to be that one.
No other questions at this time, other than I'd like to move forward.
Shared management number two is what you're talking about?
Yes, probably a little bit unique in that maybe we, we start with just our own to kind of address some of the other issues that we have. Instead of, because which, if you look at that, there's a shared management where we both co-purchase that service. What I'm saying is maybe we do that, maybe we not. Maybe we just purchase it ourselves for our own system. But we start those conversations to build to the possibility of moving into that shared management where we share those costs moving forward. There's a lot of flexibility, a lot of details here, a lot of conversations, but moving towards that number two. I'm definitely not going to say I'm, we, we just need to jump into the transit authority, or we need to merge systems. I think we need to have a better understanding of what managing a transit system in Bowling Green really looks like, bringing in a professional to help us do that.
Consensus your.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, Brent, if you can explain, if, if we contract for a manager, we would also be contracting for a financial arm of that, or a financial manager that would handle the invoicing and the, the draws for the grants, and all that would be kind of out of our hair kind of thing, right?
We would still have oversight. You know, we're still, it'd still be a contract relationship. But if we're looking for a, a true management contract, we'd really be looking for a full, just management contract. And that would be oversight of the service operator, oversight of the grant development, oversight of the financials, oversight, those kind of broad pictures of what's going on. Where do the buses run? At what time? What routes? What turns? Those types of management decisions would be covered under that type of model. Now, that could be under a shared cost with WKU. I don't know. We haven't talked, we haven't negotiated that. There's, there's possibilities there. But really, you, you pull off that management side off. So what Jeff's talking about is that financial, that grant development. All those responsibilities would be under this contract over here. And then you have an operator. An operator is responsible for getting the drivers there, making sure the buses run on time. They, then, then that's where they were talking about that true revenue hour cost. They're there to run buses, to drive buses, to operate a transit system.
The management contract, is that part of the federal funds that we receive, or are we responsible for that?
It could be down the road. I would say this year, if we went to do one, let's say we were able to get an RFP issued this fall, awarded this December, we've already kind of committed everything for the operation of the next year. So there would be a portion of that, that we would have to cover that for the, for a period of time. But as we then start to kind of pick pieces of this off and have a management and have an operation, then we can outline what, cover those costs. That would be an eligible expense under federal funding.
I'd hate to ask about estimates since we didn't.
I'm not going, I'm not going to give a budget after tonight's discussion. I am not giving a budget. $80 billion is our budget. So I can say we came in under budget, okay?
Thank you, thank you. So if you're looking for consensus.
I have a couple of questions. So Brent, looking at the service recommendations and findings, what do you think would be possible to do this year under our current system? And what do you think we want to push forward to, if we move to a new model?
The service plan would not be done this year. Transit Development Plan, those are, those are more consultant-based things. Joint branding would take more time, maybe some marketing, single website, looking at some fare structures. Goals and objectives could be, the subcommittee could be, we've already kind of developed that working group under the MPO, Planning Commission. So there could be pieces of that to kind of keep that conversation going as, as this report comes in, and then, you know, it's kind of completed. There's, there's ways to, to keep those conversations going and look at pieces of that, and what can we, what are achievable goals in a, in a short amount of time, knowing that everything is kind of subject to change in, in a very near future?
Why would we not want monies to come through our finance department? Why is that?
The monies would still flow through us. We would, whenever I talk about the management side, even if we had a management contract and then you had an operation, it would be the approval of saying, yes, this is good, this is valid, yes. But the monies would still flow through us. We would handle the monies. That has not been our issue. Our finance department is top-notch. The mayor started this meeting with our awards and our recognitions of our finance department. We have had no issues in our finance department.
It just kind of sounded like to me, just a few minutes ago, we were trying to get rid of receiving monies pertaining to transit.
No, I, I think Jeff's question was about development of and review of the financial system. That's been one of our issues with our current contractor over the last several years, is related to that side of it. And I think that's what his question's addressing. The money would still flow through the city because the city is the ultimate responsibility. So the only way we would get out of that game is under a transit authority, which I don't think anybody believes we're ready for at this point.
Our, our finance department is, is not trained in federal transit grant expenditures, what's an eligible cost, what's not. We got into this with workforce development. We were not the, the judge of what was eligible and what was not. That was supposed to be done prior to it getting to our hands. So what we're looking for is a, a partner, a, a manager that sees the invoices and says, yes, that's an eligible cost. We're going to file that for reimbursement for the, for the federal transit grant. And that gets submitted, and it flows, and it's every month, and it's like clockwork. And we don't wait three months, four months, five months, six months for an invoice to draw down on a grant. And we don't have findings in our own audit that we didn't have a, a payable, proper amount of receivable or payable booked for, for a transit grant. So we're looking to clean that up as, as part of this process. And so we need a capable person that can look at these federal transit rules and, and regulations with expenditures, what's eligible, what's not, and, and before it gets past us for, for a request for reimbursement, we know it's good. And that's what we're looking for. That's the end goal.
It's that frontline type of support and, and review before it gets to our finance department, who would still process payment and be responsible for the money. I'm sorry to cut away. Did you have additional questions, Commissioner Brent?
Yes, but for Toby and AJ, that would be.
I will at least step aside.
So with the full merger with one service package and the transit authority formation, I'm excited about the potential for revenues to be able to do more with our transit, offer more options, especially be able to get folks out to the factories or other options other than just buses. So I'm excited. So which one of these models is the most efficient and really helps in terms of less overhead and more for actual service for the people?
I think from a staffing cost point of view, they're both very similar. It really depends on how efficient of an organization do you want to run? How much do you want to squeeze to, to make employees really work hard to be able to deliver? I always did that when I had people working for me. But some, sometimes organizations don't do that. But I think under this number, this full merger with one service package, or under one with a, a joint board, either one, from an, from a staffing point of view, you can staff them, but both basically the same.
What are some examples that you know of that have done these models really well, that we can look at to see what they've been able to do in terms of similar sized cities?
So there's lots, lots, like, I'm from Pennsylvania. There's lots of examples in Pennsylvania that I could, that I could point at. We have some examples in the report from other places. AJ can talk to some of those other locations. But we, we were trying to look at communities where there were universities and two different services. We, we've also were able, going to be pointing to examples in the report of where we've seen mergers and what, what have really been successful in merging things together. And mergers really require, the ones that I've seen be really successful is one really strong leader that can be responsible to drive it and make it work with a vision, and then the authority to, to accomplish that vision from both parties. Both parties trust that person to be able to make it work. Without that, it's, they just don't go well. So I think that's, you've got to sort of work in steps. You have to build trust. You have to start building, start building transparency in the community in terms of the services. So the community sees them as one service. They can easily access either service and make it work. So make it work for the customers, then focus on the efficiencies on the backend as trust builds, and you can make the money, money side work.
And that's actually why we created that, that step graphic upfront. That, that's not something we put in every report. That's, we created that specifically for Bowling Green. Because I think the, the, we both talked about it, for a city the size of Bowling Green with the assets you have here, I think we, we both think a transit authority is the most efficient way that you can go. But there are a lot of discrepancies in service delivery currently. So when you start those, those merger discussions, a lot of things can, can come up. And so these are all things where you start the discussion, and you can land at any one of these steps. And it's just one more step toward a full, fully efficient service. But any of them will, will function well in a city of Bowling Green. So for example, if you're procuring a, a management, a manager for the city's system, theoretically, you know, Western Kentucky already has a, a contract manager. Theoretically, that same manager could, could be managing both systems. And so if you sit down with Western Kentucky and have these conversations over the next year, and you decide, you know, that would be best for both of us, then it might, you take a step further, and that's, that's the full merger with two service packages. So you just decide we're going to jointly procure a manager for both systems.
That could be all in one procurement cycle, or maybe one first procurement cycle, you select a contractor, they have a contractor, and then the next procurement cycle, maybe you're working, communicating together, and you would say, let's issue a, an RFP together and select one, one vendor to do that.
And well, moving to this model, save enough money to where we can expand our service hours and be more creative and offer more services, or is it not that much savings?
I don't think it's that. I don't, I think you can do some marginal things, but it's not that much savings. I don't think you're going to generate hundreds of thousands of dollars here to really add service. I think you'll be able to generate some additional money that you could put into marketing. You might be able to tweak some routes. You might be able to, you know, do a joint app so that people can have an app on their phone, to be able to see when the next bus is coming and have technology installed. There may be things like that you can do. But I think it can set you up as a community to be prepared for changes in external funding sources. So potentially pursuing additional federal funding sources, or state funding sources, or other funding sources that may come up that you might be able to expand service with.
Yep. And so, so, yeah, so there's, there aren't, there's not so much front-end cost savings there through these management models. But I do think there's something to be said for just increasing your coordination with each other. You will increase ridership. I can say that pretty, pretty flatly. If you start promoting this to both groups evenly, you will increase ridership. And that funding can come down later, because most of the funding models are based on ridership. So if you increase your ridership, you're increasing the opportunity to take less of the burden off the city and more toward holistic growth as a transit, transit system.
Thank you. That's all my questions. But since it's a public hearing, are we going to give the public a chance to comment before we make a decision?
Jennifer, you've already talked about transit. I don't know that we need any more comments from you. Is there anyone else that has a, has a comment? Yes, ma'am.
Deanie Oliva. Y'all did a marvelous job. It's, it's a great, it's a great presentation of some nice stair steps of how we can move from one place we are to the next place. But yet I hear folks saying, yeah, but what is, what, what is it? What, what do we vote on? I mean, what, what's the next step? And I heard that we already have, could you go back to those five, the service thing? We already have a committee, no, no, before that one. What, what do you call that?
Oh, the list of service.
The service recommendations. Thank you.
Recommendations, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, that's perfect. Okay? And one of the most important things, and one of the ones that's there, is establish a set of transit goals and expectations for service. And right now, that is one, what I'm hearing, is not yet well decided between Toppers and City. And so there's a place to start. You talked about joint schedules. That's something else that can be done, joint marketing. But what really needs to be done, it seems, is that you need to start out with a task force, a committee, as you love to put it, that has, okay, we have 90 days in which to decide or look at what our transit goals and objectives are. At least begin that discussion, so that we have some, a direct response to these study goals and recommendations. I love the way they've talked about increasing our responsibility and accountability, both to our funding sources and to our consumers. That was, that came in, and I appreciate that it came in. And we're going to do that, I think, by going from this general policy talk, now moving to, okay, given 90 days, what, what can we expect to get done in 90 days? And Brent, maybe you can tell us that, okay, in terms of moving forward? Because that's where we're at right now, is at a point of moving forward. Thank you.
Follow up at that would. We haven't heard from Ben or MPO staff about, in terms of the committee that we have. What do you all think the committee could done, could get done in terms of these service recommendations as a committee?
At the MPO level, we, we have talked about, as Toby and AJ had discussed, and Brent mentioned it as well, establishing a working committee for transit and mobility as a whole, kind of the big picture of what Brent was alluding to. The details of that are not worked out, but it's something that we plan to implement within the next month or so. As this study is wrapping up, is that is the, the next logical step that we can take of establishing a committee to work through some of those goals and objectives, and set expectations between WKU and GOBG Transit, and getting both parties to be part of that committee. We don't know who all else will be on that, but obviously our, our MPO committees and the members who serve on that will be invited to the table at some point. I think we would want to look to invite public comment and other stakeholders who are influenced by the public transportation system, GOBG and Topper Transit. So that's all I can say on that for right now.
So would we need to also have some sort of decision on delegating that to them tonight? Or are they have permission already?
Uh, repeat your question.
About the MPO?
Yeah.
No, I don't, we don't have to delegate that. They are, they are already that entity responsible for transportation planning here in Bowling Green, Warren County, under their federal rule. So I don't think we have to delegate that.
Comments? Yes, sir. Come up to the microphone. Tell us who you are, please. We just can't hear if you're not on the microphone.
Mark Fuqua. How, how many riders does, are a year on the GOBG?
Detail it.
Did, did y'all know that?
Around 80,000 rides.
Yeah. And it fluctuates quite a bit, especially because there was the service planning a couple of years ago. So we usually like to go three out. But yeah, the, the latest figures, I think, are on 80,000. But you also have Topper Transit to throw in there. We're discussing transit as a whole.
And what is the GOBG budget per year? Or what, what monies do they have?
1.3 million, 80,000 rides. Western has approximately 800,000 rides and probably a couple million dollar budget.
That's, that's all I, I just had a couple. That's, that's all I, I just had a couple.
Those are real rough numbers on the top of my head.
Comments or questions? Okay, I think we're looking for consensus on direction for Brent to look at number two. Yes, sir?
I'm really curious about the part of the plan that says...
What is your name, sir?
Michael Grambling.
Thank you.
I am owner-operator of Art Matters on 310 East Main, Bowling Green. To develop a new service plan for GoBG, I'm not sure that I've heard explicitly from anybody that the GoGB, the folks that they're serving are by definition folks who can't afford cars, who need transportation desperately. And the feedback that I personally have heard in our organization, the Poor People's Campaign has heard, is that folks are not really particularly satisfied with that service, that it's very, very cumbersome, the routes, the availability, and even the low cost. So, I'm wondering when we look at developing a new service plan, are we going to take those things into consideration to lower or eliminate the cost for the folks in Bowling Green who need it and to improve the service so they can, say, for example, get to a job, a minimum wage job that they can't afford to get to any other way?
The whole purpose of what we're looking at here tonight is try to find the manager who knows those details and help us to make those decisions.
Would we not explicitly, if we were to approve this, to charge the manager with those details?
Sorry?
Would we not want to explicitly charge the manager with those details?
That would come out of there.
Thank you.
That's a follow-up question to that for AJ and Toby. In your report, because I just have this copy of the PowerPoint, I don't have the report in front of me, do you also have models around how to improve public input in the process and some recommendations around public input? And then also on, in terms of that public input, how you use that to make sure that you're meeting the needs that you talked about?
So, I would say a couple things. There are a lot of times transit systems have an advisory committee. We're recommending starting at the NPO level. The NPO through that committee, in theory, should have not just the transit operators on it, but also people that represent different user groups of transit and mobility services in the community. So, you generally would have, you know, somebody representing people with disabilities or groups representing people with disabilities, senior citizens groups, things like that that would also participate in that, so that users are also represented. And then when you do service planning, you would, there's a series of ways that you would do or get public input, including surveys and having public meetings where you'd be able to talk to the public about changes in service and get direct input to that service.
Both of those things in your report?
Yes.
Okay, great.
The federal grant would require that those individuals would be a part of the process, wouldn't it?
In this, when you do service planning and when you look at service, there are federal requirements to ensure that there's equality in the people that you involve in the process, yes.
Hold up. Give us your name.
Mer Bolton, resident here of Bowling Green, 1535 Kensington Street. Just wondering if, while we're taking everything else into consideration, is there a way to consider city growth when we're planning these transit lanes? Nobody would have thought 10 years ago that the food stamp office would have moved way out to Lover's Lane, so.
Board with number two. Joe, are you on board with number two, the shared management? Dana, are you on board with that? I think you've got your direction, Brent. Anything else on the transit?
Yes, sir.
That concludes that part of the discussion.
Gentlemen, thank you. This is our housing discussion.
Well, Brent's setting that up. I apologize for the noise that Joe and I were creating. We missed dinner and so we were sharing some crackers.
Yeah, we were eating some nabs. It sure was.
Joe ate most of them, so we're down to sharing one.
Thanks to Ashley. Thank you, Ashley.
What I think, some of those that have hung around at this hour came for also was to hear about our housing needs assessment. So, let me give a little bit of background. The city of Bowling Green is a recipient of CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, and as part of that have, every five years have to do a consolidated plan. A large section of that consolidated plan is what's called a housing needs assessment where we have to evaluate what is going on in the community related to housing. So, we could have done that ourselves, however, we really don't have expertise in that side of it, so we elected to go out through an RFP, procure a consultant that has expertise in that subject matter. And we could have done, kind of stopped there, but we really wanted to look at what is going on in the housing market in general, larger than just a focus with CDBG. So, we really wanted to have a conversation and a study and evaluation of what's going on in general. I'm sure you all, just like myself, get a lot of conversations, when are we going to stop building apartments in this town? And we all say, have no idea, whenever they're done. We, the city has not built any, I will tell you that, city has not built any apartments in Bowling Green and Warren County. So, we procured Bowen National Research to assist us in this. We wrote out a scope. That scope was not intended to be a study of everything related to residential or housing. It was broad in the sense of, it was a study in the market here in Bowling Green, Warren County, looking at a five-year future of what are the demands for housing moving forward at varying levels? So, you have an affordability part, you have a market-based part, what are those demands moving forward? We've been through a tremendous growth curve in this, in this community, both city and county in the last several years. And so, then you have to evaluate, what is, what do we need moving forward? You know, there's always an evolution in housing. Housing costs are always a talking point of discussion and I will tell you that there are many, many, many factors that go into that. It is not a simple, you change X and Y is your change result. That is a very complex thing unto itself and there are a lot of factors that go into that. So, that is not a simple thing that the city is going to take on and all of a sudden just tweak one thing and I got the magic key in my office, all I got to do is turn it to the left at the same time Nick turns his to the left. But it's about really looking at what is the market demands, what are the needs in the community, not just in Bowling Green, but we really looked at this for, across the county. If we think that our housing market stops at where our annexed property or where the geopolitical boundaries are, we are wrong. People don't know where those boundaries are. Half the time, they don't know if they're in the city or in the county or which school district sometimes. So, really looking at this from what is it in Bowling Green, Warren County and what are the future demands for that? So, Patrick Bowen with Bowen National Research is our consultant for this. I told him I'd do the introduction and try to get some of those points in there, but from now, we'll turn it over to him to really present the plan. You all have been given a copy of the plan. It will be posted on the city's website tomorrow, so we've kind of held it back until you all could review it. We'll also do another one of these presentations in the morning at the Builders Association where we've invited a number of people to come hear the same presentation, we just wanted to give you all first dibs. So, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Bowen. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me here. I'm Patrick Bowen, president of Bowen National Research, and I apologize, I'm not bearing any championship rings here this evening, but I, what I do offer is a lot of information, a lot of data and 22 years of experience. Our firm does about 500 studies nationwide every year. Now, those are not all housing needs assessments. We only do about four or five housing needs assessments a year, mostly because those are pretty complicated. We spend a lot of time on those studies, invest a lot of resources into that, so. But again, we've done about 45 housing needs assessments around the United States and it's, was a great honor to work here in the city and meet a lot of great people. Before I get started in the presentation itself, I have to thank Brent, he was instrumental in helping us out, as well as Nick Cook with the city and then even Ben Peterson, he was very helpful. Yes. I won't say who was most helpful, but these gentlemen really...
You said it when you said even Ben Peterson.
But these gentlemen were instrumental in helping our firm kind of steer our way through this and get in contact with the right people and I'm very grateful to them and they are good representatives of your city, so you should be proud to have these men in the county, even you, Ben, as part of this process. All right, so I've got a lot to cover and keep in mind that we were retained in November. We issued the report, a draft report, in late February, so we worked less than four months on this. The report itself is about 200 pages or more. It is intense. There's a lot of information in it. I don't have that time and nor do you folks maybe want to hear all those details, but there is a lot of information in the report I will not cover tonight. So, as I speak of certain things and Brent had mentioned, you know, there's a specific scope that we had to follow. There's also a lot of stuff that I have, we just couldn't get it into this presentation today. So, certainly if you have questions, you can ask and for those that are in the audience or at some point will see this on TV, those folks may not hear what they want to hear tonight or the topics that they are passionate about. That doesn't mean that we didn't cover them. It is highly possible that we did. So, we listed out the scope of work. We looked at a lot of demographic characteristics and trends for the city, as well as Brent said, the county. We looked at a lot of economic conditions and activity that's going on here. We inventoried, we spent a lot of time inventorying your housing stock, so that's the apartments, that's the non-conventional rentals like homes and mobile homes and things like that, for-sale housing stock, the senior care facility, so a really robust inventory of your housing stock. We looked at a lot of other housing factors, so crime, transportation, you guys, you talked a lot about transportation here this evening, still a lot of other factors. Those I won't get into, those other housing factors, but there's a whole section dedicated to these other things that influence why people choose to live where they live. We got a lot of great input from community stakeholders, as well as the residents of the city. By my account, we had probably more than 1,000 points of contact, so that's a credit to the city and the, and again, the county, people wanting to contribute, people had a voice, they had an opportunity to speak up and let us know what was going on. And then we did, what was probably one of the critical pieces is take all this information and then look at what are the housing gaps in the market? And as Brent said, we looked at a lot of different income levels, so this is not an affordable housing study, this is not a moderate income housing study, this is not a high income, this is not just rentals, it's not just for sale. It took everything into consideration to present this group, the city, this commission and the mayor with good information to make some decisions on the entire housing market. And then through that, we established housing priorities and strategies and then, I'm not going to cover it, but we did spend a lot of time on your reinvestment area and talked about different trends and activity that's going on there. Critical to understand, we studied the city and so you're going to see a lot of tables and graphs that say PSA, that's the primary study area, that's Bowling Green. So, every time I say PSA, you see PSA, that is Bowling Green. The SSA, that's the surrounding area, that's the balance of Warren County. And so, Brent hit it on the head, you know, the city doesn't, is not in a vacuum, it is related to the county, there's a lot of things that are impacting each other, so we do a lot of comparisons of the two, so you can see what trends are happening, what's happening with the housing market. And then we also, again, studied your reinvestment area and I won't cover that tonight, but we spent a lot of time on that as well. All right, so demographics, you know you folks are growing, you've been growing since 2000 at least and the demographic projections through 2023 are also significant. In fact, both your population, by the way, a lot of these graphs you'll see, that royal blue in most of the graphs, that's going to be the city of Bowling Green, the dark blue will be the balance of the county. And then as a point of reference, we always have the state of Kentucky. Just understand if this number that I'm showing you, well, how does it, big picture, relate to the entire state?
All right, can I make sure I understand what you mean by the balance of Warren County?
Basically, it's...
Is it including Bowling Green and Warren County?
It is not. It's excluding.
Excluding.
Excluding, yep. So, there'll be, if you put the two together, then you got the county. In fact, I don't have it in this, but the study itself also then gives you the whole county. If you want to see what's happening countywide, we have those numbers in the report as well.
But these are, the SSA and PSA are totally separate.
Separate, totally separate. Good question. All right, so like I said, demographics have been positive and they are projected to be positive over the next five years or at least up through 2023 and those growth rates are, you know, triple the state numbers in terms of percentage growth, whether it's the population or household. So, you've had growth, you're going to have a lot of growth and that has implications on the housing market. So, we have tons of demographics in the report. I'm just going to pick about four or five topics that I thought were critical. And first here is households by age and so the graph in the upper left-hand corner is showing you how the city compares with the balance of the county and the state of Kentucky in terms of these different age groups and it's pretty well balanced. There's a lot of markets that we study around the country where it's heavy towards the baby boomers. It's dominated by the baby boomers. And here, you've got a nice distribution, that's a good thing for long-term demographic trends as the city continues to change. And as you can see on the bottom left-hand corner, we took the demographic, I'm sorry, the household projections by age groups and just showed you how much it's going to change over this five-year projection period. And so, most of the growth is going to be among what I'm calling aging millennials. Millennials right now are about age 39s where they top out at, but over the next five years they're going to hit age 44. So, that's the aging millennials that it's going to grow the most at 726 households. One thing you'll keep in mind, not just in this table, but other tables, when you see 726, does that mean 726 new households are coming into Bowling Green? Some of those are, but some of those are from the younger age group, that 25 to 34 age group. Remember, this is a five-year projection, so people are moving from one age segment into another. You'll see that from income levels when I show you changes in households by income. Some of that is people from lower incomes moving up into higher or people retiring that had higher incomes are moving into the lower income segment. So, you'll see a lot of that, but the point being is, you know, here's where the changes are expected to happen by age group. So, I put this in here because I, sometimes I think folks lose sight of, we all know people struggle financially, but I felt like it was critical to at least give people some perspective. You have over 15,000 people in the city that live in poverty. One-fourth of all children live in poverty in the city and to give perspective in terms of how you compare with the state of Kentucky or the balance of the county, the city has a disproportionately high share of folks that live in poverty. I think the national share is about 18%, so close to what Kentucky is. So, you have a lot of folks that are struggling financially. This is a pretty important slide. This is households by income, so the upper left-hand side is by tenure, meaning whether it's renters or owners. So, the left-hand, top-left-hand graph is the renter households and it shows the distribution. And as you can see, it's, again, it's the, this case, it's the 2018, it's the dark blue and 2023 is the lighter, the royal blue. And again, the distribution for renters, as you would expect, a lot of lower income people. And as you look on the graph on the right, most of the homeowners are the higher income folks. And so, again, this is pretty normal, the distributions are normal compared to a lot of cities we look at. The graph on the bottom right, that's the, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the growth, the change in households by income by tenure over the next five-year period. And as you can see, I circled just a few of those, the dark blue being the home, I'm sorry, dark blue being the renter. So, you have a lot of renter household growth among higher income households over the next few years. That's critical to future housing needs. You also have in that royal blue, a lot of low-income homeowner growth and that's a perfect example, I was talking about before, where you have a lot of people making 10,000 to 20,000 and 20,000 to 30,000 homeowners. That's just folks retiring and their incomes have a decrease, so they've shifted into that income segment. So, that's what that, those numbers are illustrating. So, this is a graph illustrating housing by tenure and what is considered substandard housing. This is using the federal government's definition, so it's folks that are living in severe overcrowded housing or folks, believe it or not, there's still housing units in our, in our nation that don't have complete indoor plumbing and Bowling Green is no different. And so, we showed up here, those two segments, in total, there's roughly 500 housing units, renter housing units that are substandard by federal guidelines. Yes, sir?
Does Brent know where those are located?
The Census Bureau, which is where this data comes from, they'd get it down to, at a minimum, like a census tract, which is like part of the city. So, you can get some sense of where these would be.
We want to know wherever it comes from. We want to know where those substandard houses are located or in apartments. Can you make sure that Brendan... Can you make sure that Brendan and his staff are aware of those locations?
I can get census data that will not get it down to what houses. It'll just get it down to, would be equivalent to you, maybe like a neighborhood or something like that. So there's, you can point to what part of the city might have it, but not the streets or
Neighborhood is fine.
Okay.
We'll find the neighborhood.
Okay.
When you say based on census data, is this a percentage or a specific response from an individual turning in a form to the
It's people returning, turning in responses to forms. Good question. So you have a lot of affordable housing units in the city. I think by our account, over 1,400 rental units that operate with tax credits or subsidy. You also have a lot of housing choice vouchers, I think over 600 that are issued. And I'll talk about that a little bit more detail later. So even though you have all this affordable rental, yes, sir?
Can you give me the 2019 terminology, if you can, of what is affordable housing? You know, all of us has grown up with that term, are we needing more affordable housing? If you can, just give me a little background, what is an affordable house or an apartment?
Well, the, the federal government provides guidelines. So for example, those that are classified as very low-income households, I know you asked about housing, but low-income households would be people that make up to 50% of median income. Here in Bowling Green, a family of four, that's about $30,000 a year, a household income. Under the tax credit program, households can have up to 80% of median household income and qualify for tax credit housing. Family of four, that's about $47,000 a year. So first off, in terms of who, who is qualifying for subsidized and who is considered somebody that needs affordable housing, it can run that whole spectrum up to generally 47,000. It depends on what, what it is you're looking at, and what kind of financing a developer might be applying for to develop that type of housing. I showed you an earlier slide, people live in poverty. I think the four-person household income limit for the classification of poverty is 25,000 or whatever the slide said. So those are the folks that are, you know, struggling financially, that are, that need affordable housing. What is affordable housing? I guess by definition, and this is a great slide to kind of talk about that, is, you know, is it housing, again, by HUD's definition, housing that a person doesn't have to pay more than 30% of their income to live in that housing? Well, here in Bowling Green, you have 6,300 renters that are paying more than 30% of their income towards housing. They would be called cost burden, which is in the left-hand side of that slide. Even worse, though, we have severe cost burden. Those are people that pay more than 50%. And if you imagine, think about that, people are paying more than half of their income towards housing. It doesn't leave them much for anything else. And you have 3,400 renters in the city that are severe cost burden. So those are significant people that are struggling financially, that are spending a disproportionately high share of their income towards housing costs. And I'll talk a little bit more about subsidized housing and what that is. I'll talk about tax credit housing and what that is, as well as market rate housing. So I'll talk about what housing is. I'll show you rents that we found for these different types of housing. I'll show you, if you want to go rent a house, a duplex, I'll show you those prices, so you can get, start to get a sense of what's out there. You probably have some sense, but I'll show you what we found.
Can I ask real quick while we're on
Yes, ma'am.
If, if in the report, it compares us with other cities our size in Kentucky or near us in other states, that in terms of their rates of cost burden versus severe cost burden?
No, the, your ratio of, like, let's take the, just the cost burden, those people that pay more than 30% of their income, I think your ratio is like 45.7%. So about 45% of your renters are cost burden. State of Kentucky is about 41. A lot of the cities that we study around the country, it's in those low 40s. So you have just a slightly higher share of people that are cost burden, renters that are cost burden. We, we, we have a lot of economic stuff in the report. I don't cover any of that here tonight. Kudos to the city. You've added, I think, at least the county overall, has added over 9,000 jobs, I think, since 2010. Your unemployment rate is at a 10-year low. You have a lot of good things happening economically. And that, that kind of shows up in this, this map on the upper-left-hand side. You've got about 36,000 people coming in here daily into the city limits to work. And the only reason I show that is, and this, keep in mind, this report has multiple purposes. One, it's obviously inform this group to make some good housing decisions based on data. It's also educational for the city to understand what's happening and the challenges. But this is, this report also serves as a marketing tool for the city, right, to make the case that we have opportunities here in Bowling Green, and here are those opportunities. And this is one of those cases where if developers really understand that you have a lot of folks commuting into the city to work, but they're not staying here, and I have some theories behind that, but you have a lot of them here, you could capture those folks if you had the housing that they're looking for. Okay, we spent a lot of time on this, and I'll just spend just a minute so that everybody's on the same page in terms of what I'm talking about. So market rate housing, that's housing that's open to the market. Anybody can live there as long as management decides that they meet their criteria. There's tax credit housing that serves households that make up to 80% of median income. As I said earlier, that's a household of four with about $47,000 a year. Then we also surveyed government subsidized housing. As I said earlier, that serves people up to 50% of median income, a household of four, that's about $30,000 here in Bowling Green. So we surveyed all these segments. There's some of them, you'll see that they have mixed income, where it's market rate and government subsidized. We surveyed 77, this is multifamily apartments, 77 apartments in the city. I didn't put the county numbers in here, but they're in the report. But the vacancy, I'm sorry, the occupancy rate is 93.2%. That's okay. But I'll show you here in a minute, there's, there's something behind that. And one of the things to notice is the, that all those vacant units are in the market rate inventory. And so what I don't want to happen, and I think the report makes it clear, but I'll make it clear tonight, just because you have 444 vacant market rate units does not mean you can't build more market rate units. And there's multiple reasons for that. So let me take you through and explain that. But by the way, the tax credit, all the subsidized stuff we surveyed, it's full waiting list. There's a serious pent-up demand for affordable housing. So this is just a breakout real quick of, of the over 5,000 market rate units that we surveyed. I talked about, you know, the occupancy rate wasn't high here. We show vacancy rate, it's 8.8%. And I know the numbers are small on the table and might not show up on, on your screens. But the thing to point to, and this is really one of the areas why this vacancy rate is high, is there's three-bedroom, three-bath units, there's four-bedroom, four-bath units. And those have 123 vacancies out of the 444. And there's others in there, that those are student housing. Your student housing market is struggling. We've talked to a lot of leasing agents, and there's some challenges that off-campus student housing is having some trouble getting to a stabilized occupancy, which normally would be like 92%. You also have a couple of projects that are in their initial lease-up that just opened up last year, last 18 months. They're still leasing up. Those are in here too. So if you take those out, your market rate, occupancy rate goes up to 94%. And so that's a good balance. So that's telling me, if I was to develop in Bowling Green, the market rate market is fine. Again, the caution would be towards student housing. The only other thing to point out is the, we put the median rents for some of the common bedroom types up there. And rents within the city compared to the county, and again, that's the royal blue versus the dark blue. I think the rents are about 5% higher if you, in a market rate apartment, if you live here in the city. So not that much difference. And that's important, because I know a lot of times, we always do this. If I study a city, I study the county. And one of the things I want to understand is, is there a rent differential between the two that, that you're competing with your surrounding community? Is housing more affordable, or for-sale housing, which I'll talk about that in a minute, you know, is that causing people to leave, and you're losing people? You saw early in one of the first graphs I showed you, you are growing, the balance of the county is growing. So this is evidence, at least part of the reason, it's, there is no difference in rents. People can find similar rents regardless of where they're looking. We looked at age and quality. So this is real quick, the age of the housing stock. You have one of the newest housing stocks I think I've ever studied. Over half your units were built, again, it's just the market rate, over half your units were built since 2000. So you have a modern housing stock. We rated the properties. Our staff actually physically visited every single property that we surveyed. We rated them on their exterior upkeep only, so we didn't go inside and look at units or anything like that. But our staff looked at the architectural design, the upkeep, the maintenance, the physical appearance of the project, and we rated them. And your market rate housing inventory is a good quality to excellent in some cases. Tax credit projects, I talked about that before. These serve households up to 80% of median income. Everything is full regardless of the bedroom type. All, I think all but two, I think we found 12 or 14 roughly properties, and I think all but two had waitlist, the largest waitlist being 15 households. That's not big. I mean, there's some cities we study where the waitlists are at 100 or 150 households. But you got waitlist, and people can't get into these units. They got to wait a while to get into them. In terms of the rental rates, again, I compared the, the city with the balance of the county in the royal blue versus dark by the most common bedroom types. And now flip it, you know, we looked at market rate was slightly higher in the city. Tax credit rentals are just slightly lower here in the city as opposed to the balance of the county.
Did you survey the quality of those as well?
Yeah, here you go. Great segue. Thank you. So we looked at, and I do this, by the way, for subsidized housing. So we did the same thing for all these. So I needed to understand, okay, here's how they're performing. Here's the condition, at least the appearance of these properties. Here's how old the stock is, because these all affect, you know, why people want to live and, or what choices they even have available to them. The tax credit program didn't start until 1986. So as you can see, there was nothing built prior to 1990. You keep having tax credit product added to the, to the market over these different development periods that we threw up there. In terms of quality, the, the quality of these properties are, you know, mostly in the B range. So again, the tax credit projects are in good condition. They're not that old, 20, 20-something years. So they're not that old, and they're good shape. I can't say that for other, a lot of markets we've studied. Sometimes the quality of the housing is, is not good. Government subsidized, again, serving households that make up to 50% of median income. And we, we had those that have concurrent tax credits with them, as well as just tax credits. But the point to you folks is, these serve households that make up to 50% of median, they're fully occupied. Their waitlists are greater. Some of the properties, I think we saw the largest at 57 households at one property. They all have waitlists, and I think some waitlist, one of them was up to eight months long, in terms of how long it takes to get into a property. Now, unlike the other housing segments, the subsidized housing stock is older, and that's normal. A lot of that product in, around the country is built in the 60s and 70s. Bowling Green's no different. You have a lot of that older product. And as a consequence, you've got a lot of that product that's lower quality. And at some point, those, those properties need to be modernized and, and updated.
Can I ask why all the other ones were kind of built recently, and these kind of stopped?
Yeah, my, because most of the subsidized projects are being funded through federal funding. The federal government started to get out of subsidized housing roughly, I think, in the 1990s. That has nothing to do with demand or interest, or it's just the federal government's role changed. A lot of cities asked me to put this in here, so I thought I would add it to yours. And all this is, is, and that's a good kind of a follow-up to your last question. So a lot of projects, when they get a federal subsidy, they have a contract that's typically around 20 years. So what we do is, we want to look at projects that are operating on their subsidy, all these projects here in Bowling Green operate under Section 8. When do their contracts expire? And why that's relevant is, you know, if a project were to lose its federal funding, then what happens to it? Often, it'll convert over to something else, tax credit or market rate. And while the government has things in place to protect the residents that were currently in that place from being displaced, that still causes a problem, because you're pulling these projects out of the inventory. And, and I'll talk about vouchers here in just a second, but those people would get vouchers if they got displaced. People that have vouchers have a tough time finding a place to live. And so I'll talk about that. But the point being is, the city, the city can't do much, at least my understanding, a city can't really do much with subsidized projects and get engaged with them. But you just need to be sensitive to if these things expire, and it doesn't happen often. But if it does, you know, you run the risk of losing affordable housing that's, you know, critical to the city. So housing choice vouchers, that's a voucher that you have that helps you pay for rent. So like I was, your question before was, why isn't there subsidized housing? So vouchers have kind of taken the place to a degree. So if Patrick Bowen wanted to rent a, a unit here in Bowling Green, and I was low income, and I had a voucher, and I was looking for a two-bedroom, here in this case, the payment standard is 765. So it's saying the government will pay up to 765 for that unit. I'm going to go rent, because Brent Childers has an apartment, I'm going to go rent. And so his rent's 750. Patrick Bowen can only afford 600 based on my income. The government will pay the difference of what he's charging and what I can pay. Now, why does that relevant? What does that even mean? Well, again, you have 600 people in the city that have these vouchers. And if you look at what the tax credit inventory is, and I just put the median rents up there, the payment standards are higher than the median tax credit rents. That's saying if Patrick Bowen wanted to rent a tax credit project, I, I can afford to go get a, a tax credit rental. If Patrick Bowen wants to get a market rate unit, now the challenge gets tougher, because the payment standard is lower than what a typical market rate unit is. So any voucher holders in your city that's trying to get a non-subsidized, non-tax credit project is going to have a tough time finding one that's going to cover, their voucher's going to cover the rent. Now, on the other side, you know, all the tax credit stuff, I could use my voucher there. But as I showed you before, they're all full. They all have waiting lists. So even though I have a voucher, voucher holders have a tough time finding affordable housing. Non-conventional rentals, the only reason I wanted to put this in there, because I realized, as we all should, that multifamily apartments aren't the only rental options available. So we inventoried, what could we find? If I wanted to find a rental that wasn't an apartment, could I find a house, a duplex, a unit over a storefront, a mobile home? Could I rent it? What's available? So we put in the table, what's out there. Most of those units, we found 70 in the entire city, which is nominal. And most of those were the two and three bedrooms with the rents of 768 for a two-bedroom, and over $1,100 for a three-bedroom. So again, those rents are high relative to what low-income people can pay. And going back to the vouchers, if you had it, you're going to have a tough time finding even a non-conventional rental where the voucher would cover your, your rental rate. For-sale housing, we, I split it up here in this table where I compared the, the city, again, PSA, with the surrounding area of the county, and show you what we found in terms of what was sold since 2016 up through the end of 2018. And I'll, I'll dive into those numbers real quick. But then also, we looked at what's available. If I want to buy a house in the city versus the rest of the county, what is out there? And we, we color-coded them by price points. Those maps aren't easy to read. And, but the, the map in the study will show you where different homes are, whether they were sold or available by price point. And you'll get to see where they're concentrated. So this is the only slide I have in terms of the historical sales. Again, this would just be a three-year period from January 2016 to the end of 2018. And just a couple things to point out, and I circled it just to save you time trying to search for it. Most of the stuff sold in the city during this three-year period, more than half of it was priced between 100 and, 100,000 and 200,000 dollars. I circled next to that, the percentages, the days on market. That's how long it takes a house to typically sell that's listed on MLS. And you could see, those homes are selling fast. So you got a lot of activity in that price range. They're moving quickly. Anything less than 100 days is, is, is pretty good. And so here, overall, the, the city averages, days on market is 93. So stuff is moving quickly. There's a high demand for for-sale housing. And then we just compared it with the rest of the county, and the, the numbers are very comparable. This is available inventory, 187 units that we found through MLS. We broke it out by price point. And as you could see, again, a big cluster of those are kind of in that middle range, up to about $300,000. And I circled again, the days on market. Those are selling very fast, so they're not staying on the market very long. And one of the things that, that we got input from stakeholders, and I'll talk about that in a minute, and residents of the city, that seems to be the consensus of theirs where the need is for housing, for-sale housing, and certainly the, the sales data of what I showed you, what's been sold, as well as what's available in the market.
The need for for-sale housing, is it what price point?
Well, a lot of the residents are thinking that it's, and residents and stakeholders are saying it's under $250,000, you know, down to 150. And even the residents, there's a lot of them have felt that even, if you could find it, priced under $150,000. The other thing to point out, and we heard this a lot, and the data backs it up, there's a lot of inventory priced over $300,000, a third of your product here in the city, over 40% in the county. But you'll notice the days on market, which I didn't circle on those, but those are taking a lot longer to sell. So that's kind of normal, because there's less buyers that have higher incomes. And so those might move slower. But it still illustrates where the product demand is in terms of for-sale housing. And I put this in here, I don't normally do this, but I, you know, I'm going to go back one slide. All right, so there's 25 houses that are priced under $250,000. So somebody might conclude, well, there's something available for lower-income people to buy. So somebody might conclude, well, there's something available for lower-income people to buy. So I felt that this next slide was kind of important to show because here I broke it out by year. If you look at the right where I circled median list price, there's median list price under two hundred thousand dollars. So could you buy a home less than two hundred thousand dollars in the city? Well, it's out there, there's forty or fifty units, but if you look at that stuff, that's all built prior to nineteen seventy. So it's older product and maybe that's a good entry-level home or whatever, whatever you want to call it, it's, it's affordable to low-income people, but just keep this in mind. You buy an older home, there's associated cost with that, right? You've got to repair and maintain that maybe a newer home wouldn't have, so these folks that are struggling financially, that are trying to buy a house and they qualify and they could pay the mortgage, but now they got this, this ongoing challenge of maintaining and repairing these homes. So that's, that's the only reason I put that in there. Senior care facilities, we looked at four different segments, independent living, congregate care, that's like independent senior living but with housekeeping, meal service plan, something like that. Assisted living, it's where they do daily assistance with your, your living, bathing assistance, medication reminders, those kind of things, and then nursing homes. I didn't circle it on here and I should, but the, the key to take away from here is, this is a incredibly tight market for senior care housing. If you look at the occupancy levels of those facilities we surveyed, all sixteen of them, and then compare it to the next column where we showed you the national occupancy rate, each of those four segments, the occupancy rate is higher than the national average. I'm, I'm gonna say, this may be, out of all the forty-five studies I've ever done, this might be the tightest senior care market I've ever seen. So, you know, if you kind of rewind to some of the stuff I talked about, market rate housing, while there's vacancies, you got a lot of growth of, of higher-income households, there's a continued need, you're gonna have a growing need for higher-income housing, rental housing. If you look at the affordable housing segment two, I showed you, there's, you know, waitlist, there's no occupancies. You got folks that are rent burden or cost burden as I showed you, so there's a need for that. The for-sale housing segments, there's all segments that look like they're very strong, homes are selling quickly with the exception of some of the higher-priced stuff over three hundred thousand. Senior care, care facilities, every segment operating at extremely high occupancy rates. And if you look back, if you remember back on one of the first slides I showed you where it had households by age group, the senior age segment is growing rapidly, that's no different than anywhere else in the country. So you have so many dynamics going on with the housing market, it's incredibly strong, at least from an owner's perspective, but there's a shortage of housing from the consumer's perspective and you have all these, these pressures coming from your demographics of this growth that's gonna happen over the next five years. Many age segments, many income segments, so you got all this pressure that's happening that's gonna continue to increase the demand for a lot of different types of housing. I'll go through these really, really quick, we spent a lot of time talking with folks, we had over twenty stakeholders where we either interviewed somebody or they did an online survey with us. Brent was incredibly helpful, putting three focus groups together, I think we had about forty-one participants for that. And these were just, you know, keep in mind with sixty, over sixty-one people participating, we had a lot of comments, a lot of ideas. But we put what was the most common, so whether it was housing issues associated with affordability, lack of down payment, limited availability, substandard housing, high cost of renovations, that's again, things we see in a lot of cities around the country. What did the stakeholders think in terms of housing demand? It was affordable workforce housing was one of the segments that they felt was needed, rental housing. Also, folks mentioned senior and disabled populations were underserved in terms of the housing stock. A lot of folks thought detached housing, I was surprised how many folks thought, didn't think apartments, it was more detached housing, it's usually reversed. We still had a notable amount of folks talking about apartments and condominiums, particularly on the condominium side, just something to allow people to down, seniors to downsize into. Folks felt that was a critical housing segment. We did affordability levels and rentals, you had asked me, Mr. Denning, earlier on, what is affordable? Well, I'm telling you, the citizens of the city are telling you that there's a high demand for product that's in that five hundred to seven fifty range and also five hundred and lower are demand numbers. And I'll show you some housing gap numbers here in a second that reinforces that. In terms of the for-sale highs, housing, Mr. Nash, you asked me, you know, what, what, what are the hot segments or the higher demand segments? Here's what the stakeholders were telling us, it's that one hundred to two hundred range, so again, the data backs that up. Folks, this was a little surprising, stakeholders felt that in terms of type of housing, I usually get new construction is what was needed, but a lot of folks here felt that renovation, revitalization of the existing housing stock should be a priority. In terms of barriers to development, the cost of land, the cost of labor and materials were one of the things that kept coming back, that was putting some pressure on development. And then, I won't read through all those, but there's a lot of suggestions in terms of how to address housing issues and, and those kind of tied into some of our recommendations at the end. We surveyed over nine hundred residents in the city, we had a good cross-section of folks, so we got a little bit of everybody that participated in this. We asked folks personally what housing issues they're facing and this is no different than a lot of cities that we talk with or folks that we talk with. High share of income towards housing costs, I showed you the data that backed that up. Housing doesn't meet their needs, whether it was the size of the units, the features or the location. And again, substandard housing, folks felt that they were living or experienced substandard housing, I showed you statistically, the data backs that up. Housing market conditions, most people felt that the housing market was fair, but over one quarter thought the housing market was poor. Negative housing market factors, you can start to hear a theme a little bit here, it's the high prices or rents. Limited access to public transportation was often commented and even blighted housing was a comment from a lot of folks. In terms of housing needs and priorities, seventy percent of the people felt that there was a high need for rental product priced under five, five hundred dollars a month. Again, kind of matches up with what the stakeholders were telling us. And then even for-sale product, they felt product price under one fifty was a great need. And then we had some comments on the, the reinvestment area, the point of that is, you know, folks said they, they would live there if, if there was a, a housing that was priced right and they gave us suggestions on rental rates and home prices and things like that, that that is an area that people would turn to if the right housing was built. Alright, so this is, you know, if you're gonna take away from the study a couple of things, this is probably one of those moments, what was the purpose of the study? Your city put together a consolidated plan and so we provide a lot of data for Mr. Cook to put that together and show trends and characteristics and what's happening with the housing stock. We took all those things together and I could spend two hours talking about how we get up, get these numbers, there's details in the report that shows you how we got there. But this shows you, whether it's rentals or for-sale or senior care housing, you have this potential number of units that are needed. And I rated them as high priority versus moderate and often we'll put in limited, that's, if it's less than a hundred units, I might say that's a limited housing need. You don't have any of those, so every housing segment has at least moderate to high need. And so that's a good thing, we study a lot of cities that are stagnant, they're not growing and even in our economy today, they're not growing with, in terms of jobs. There's a lot of cities around this country to be envious of this city right now, I can tell you. And this is a challenge because you got a lot of folks that need housing and then you're gonna grow, so it's only gonna increase. But this is a good thing, I mean, you've got a lot of opportunities in the city, there's a lot of reasons why developers should want to come to Bowling Green. And so we show you those numbers, the one thing I want to make crystal clear, take, you know, extremely low income rental housing, that means basically rentals that people can afford up to about four hundred and forty-two dollars a month. And I have eight hundred and eighty-seven units that are needed. That does not mean that if you build eight eighty-seven, you've solved the, the housing crisis for those folks. What, there's too many, there's too many, too many dynamics that affect how many units you can do of these different price points and different types. It's so complicated and so sophisticated. What this city should use this for is to help establish priorities. So whether it's eight eighty-seven or seven hundred or six fifty for the lowest-income renter households, the point is, that is showing one of the biggest numbers in terms of housing need. But clearly from all these segments, they all have a need, so that's a good thing for the city, you have a lot of opportunities to do a lot of different type of housing and that's what our assessment essentially concluded. This is the last slide and we kept the, the recommendations and strategies broad. Because one of the things I don't want to do is, in a, a city or county or whoever we're studying, into a corner and say, these are the things you should do, these are the policies you should have. That is your charge, that's the, the resident's incentive to figure out what we want as a community. So what we've laid out for you is the data to at least understand, you know, what is happening, what are some of the challenges, what are the, some of the opportunities? And so we listed through there, I won't read through these, but the point is, it, you know, kind of ties back to, I think, what Toby and AJ were talking about, you know, they mentioned marketing. You can use this report to market, you could establish a housing committee, they talked about, you know, committee and their work, you could have a housing committee that focuses in, housing is incredibly complicated, so, you know, to think that you can take this report and start to solve your problems, you'll, you'll be misguided. So you need somebody that's an expert and is dedicated and a driver behind, they talked about having a driving force, I think is what Toby used when he was talking, right? You need a driving force behind housing too, or this, the, the needle won't move. And so you have these things, I put suggestions in there of how the city can move forward. There's so many things you can do, they, they talked about setting goals, okay? It's, it's, I don't know those guys, but you can see there's a lot of similarities in terms of set goals. And then go after the low-hanging fruit, I believe, is one of the things that somebody said. So, there's a lot of similarities in how you could deal with transportation and you can, you can deal with your, your housing market. With that said, I'll answer any questions you have. I appreciate that. Like, like I said, I mean, I, I'm not saying this to make you feel good, there's a lot of cities that just don't have the jobs. They're not growing or they're losing, I'll give a great example, there's a lot of cities around this country that are losing their millennials, they can't hold on to them, they're going to the, you know, Lexington's and Louisville, they're going to the biggest cities in the country. They're not staying in the second-tiered cities or the smaller cities or whatever around the country because of jobs, nightlife, social environment, those kind of things. You don't have that problem, that's a good thing, you know, you, you know, there's, I'm, I'm gonna present, I probably shouldn't say this because this is on, you know, public access TV, but there's, there's a city we're gonna, I'm gonna present here soon to and they can't hold on to their, their young people and their population, if I showed you their graph of their household change by age, it's all seniors and that's not a healthy thing for a housing market because those folks can't maintain their homes and so if there's no help in that city to help those seniors, where are they gonna go? There, there's a chance they may leave and then you've got these dilapidated homes that are just gonna get worse. So, y, y, you've got challenges, but you've got a lot of good things happening. Yes, sir?
Earlier, you had made a comment about individuals working in Bowling Green and leaving Bowling Green. What do we need to do, build more houses or? I think I already know the answer, they are living, moving to communities where they're able to buy things cheaper. I realize that, but what they don't realize is that a lot of those places that they're moving to, they don't have hospitals, they don't have urgent cares, they don't have drugstores. What do we do?
Well, you, you answered it early, I mean, you, you do need to build more housing, you need to build a lot of different types of housing. So if anybody thinks that they're going to start to attract these outsiders, well, those outsiders that are coming into work have a lot of different jobs and a lot of different wages. And so if you were to build middle-income rentals or middle-priced for-sale housing, well, you'll grab some, you know, but it's really depends on also what kind of community you want to be, who do you want to serve, how do you want to grow? I will, you know, it's a good reminder, I didn't cover economic, but you know, for those that worry about affordable housing and, and the concerns of what that might mean to community, I will say this, that if you don't have affordable housing, I showed you in the presentation, you know, people are cost burden. Okay, if they're cost burden and you have thousands, thousands of renters, they're paying over half of their income towards their rent. Well, that means they got less disposable income, that means that's less money they can spend in your stores. Okay, so that's an economic problem. Now, I don't know that's happening here with your, with your employers, but I can tell you, I've studied cities and, I studied Asheville, North Carolina and they just, they're bringing us back after five years to study it again, they got a major workforce problem because their housing prices are so high that none of the workers that are in the, you know, blue-collar jobs, entry levels, the, the restaurant workers, the hotel workers, they can't afford to live there and so they're commuting from counties away. And now I'm getting hired by counties that are outside of the Asheville area because now they're getting inundated with people that are getting forced out of Asheville. And so this, this is an economic issue too and so housing and economics, I know you know that, but I think sometimes when you don't think about, you know, how bad is the financial situation of some of these folks and then what does that mean for the employers? What does that mean for the employees? You get into transportation costs, you know, now they gotta commute in and out of the county and that's another burden for those folks, so.
I really appreciate all the hard work you all have done and Brent, thank you for bringing them on board and really, I, I'm really grateful to be able to really dive deeper into this issue. I think a lot of us who are in this work know it's a problem anecdotally with the families that we work with and personal experiences and just know it is, but to be able to see it with this report is incredibly valuable. One of the, I haven't got through your whole report, I just got it Thursday, still working through it, but I was wondering if you did, or if, if they're both from the census data, are we able to see how many of those forty-nine hundred kids are also in the substandard houses? Is that overlap in terms of, do we get both of those from the census data?
You can't get data that would say, here's a household that has both. You could do, and Mr. Denning was asking about like concentrations of, you know, certain types of housing in households. You, we could map, here are the census tracts that have highest poverty rates with children, I believe. And then you can correlate that to any other data set that I have, so it won't say, well, these are the exact households, but you could say, well, poverty's concentrated here and affordable housing or lack of affordable housing is concentrated here, so you, yeah, we could do that, for sure.
So, is there a portion that talks about solutions that have been, you know, proven to work in terms of, you talked about building units, but also in terms of this issue that we have of these substandard living conditions, I know of which a lot of our children are living in and that they are impacting their ability to go to school rested the next day and stay out of the doctor's office, all those things that are impacting our children. Do you have solutions of, in the report to how do we bring our substandard housing up to a place where people can be healthy in their own home?
Not probably to the detail that I, I feel you may be seeking, but there are answers out there. What my recommendation would be is, reach out to, and I, I absolutely could provide some incredible resources of other cities that are going through many of the same problems. Evansville, Indiana, you want to talk about like sophisticated and thinking through exactly like more social kind of influence of how housing impacts people's lives and vice versa? Evansville has had us study that and they've, they've tried to make some efforts to, to address it. Yellow Springs, Ohio, very small village, so not to the scale of, of your city, but you want to talk about a community that was proactive, led by a, a, a council member to push and put a committee together and, and just be real proactive in terms of addressing affordable housing, getting developers to come in and, and trying to find out where developers could go. Yellow Springs, Ohio is, is another great one. Rock Island, Illinois is another good one to look at and some of the things they've tried and that, I think there's their economic development department, I'll give you the person's name, I just saw him last week at a conference. This guy's on top of it and trying to figure out what, you know, what can they do with public and private partnerships, so it's really cool, a lot of cities are trying to do different things and I can point you to them. I didn't put those in here because again, there's too many solutions, there's, there's, there's too many ways to go. And that's why, you know, if, if you were saying, Patrick, if you were the person trying to decide how we move forward, I would say, I would start with a committee and start to set the goals, again, I'm echoing a lot of what Toby and AJ said earlier. But start there because, you know, I would be doing a disservice if I put in this report, well, here's what you do, just do these things to help the low income and here's how you help first-time homebuyers and there's too many, there's too many ways to solve these problems, so, and I don't know what fits this community. That's why, look at what other cities are doing, find out their pros and cons, some of the stuff they probably tried to do didn't work or didn't work the way they wanted it to, or there were these legal implications or these financial implications that they didn't anticipate. So I would say, learn, learn from them and I, and they, I know they'd help because I've talked to them before about helping other cities and they said that, we want to do it, we want to help each other.
From your experience, this isn't just an problem that cities deal with and it'll be here no matter what, so we're not even gonna try. But you would not say that that's the approach we should have?
No, you're never, it's never gonna go away, it's, it's, it's all, you're always gonna have people live in poverty just because you will. You always have people that will struggle financially to make ends meet and to pay their rents. What, and again, this may be out of, not my place, but you asked the question, I guess I would say, you know, try. You can make a difference, you can make a dent in housing, you are not going to solve the affordable product. You have hundreds, nine hundred people, I don't think I mentioned, you have nine hundred people on the waitlist for a voucher, you're not gonna solve that, it's, it's too, it's so big. Can you make a difference, can you make a dent, can you go after certain neighbors? Can you go after certain neighborhoods with efforts and incentives? You sure can. So, you can, you can make a change, you're not gonna solve, this stuff will not go away, but you can start to fix some of it.
And Brent, do you have follow up in terms of what our next steps are in terms of continuing to get public input now that we have the report, and forming a committee and moving forward?
So, I'll, I'll say this, next steps, tomorrow morning, the same presentation will be presented to the community. Reached out to a variety of representatives from the housing industry, developers, lenders, builders, real estate agents, nonprofits, making them, because I see this as, this is the information for the community. This is not a city thing, this is a community thing, this is about our developers and our private market understanding of what development opportunities are there, what gaps are out there, what opportunities are they now taking advantage of? But it's also on the service side of it, it's, it's opportunity to educate them, because this is a partnership in how we deliver these services and how we work with this. So it's continuing to work with Habitat, it's continuing to work with Hotel Inc., it's continuing to work with HANDS and Housing Authority, because it's, it's us providing information to them to help them secure things, but it still goes into the community. They're administering the project, they're administering the grant, but it's still to the community. So we continue to see tax credit investments, we continue to see 202 investments, we continue to see CDBG. As part of our strategy, we continue to do neighborhood improvements, we continue to create new housing opportunities, RFPs every couple of years, we continue to invest in neighborhoods, we continue to be strategic about how we make those investments, and we create opportunities for private investment in neighborhoods that haven't been seeking private investment, or haven't been receiving private investment for a number of years. Feel like that's the best opportunity for us to take advantage, because that's where you're gonna find that 1940s, 1950s type housing, where we can go in and incentivize those improvements to, to take care of some of those maintenance issues, those exterior maintenance issues that Pat was talking about. That's why we can make those steps, that's kind of our targeted area. Whenever he was talking about looking at by census tract where some of those populations are, we know where they are. We drew a circle around it, and we said, this is where we're gonna focus our attention, this is where we're gonna spend our resources, and we're gonna do this over the next 20 years. So this is really about sharing this, because this is a, it's all over the place. We're not gonna start, I'm not gonna issue an RFP next week for, we need senior care housing in this community. But it's about educating the marketplace, educating the community. There are people here today that came to, to hear this, there's gonna be people there tomorrow that came from the private industry that have built their living and built their entire financial well-being off of this industry, but they wanted to come learn about what we had to say and what Pat had to say today. So it's about us continuing to look this from a community perspective, and how do we work with our partners, be it nonprofit, be it private, be it lending, whatever that is, to continue to create opportunities for Bowling Green to grow. What I find in working in this community, of course, this is home for me, born and raised, is people love Bowling Green. They just love Bowling Green. So anything they can do about trying to make this a better place, we might disagree on how to get there, but I think one thing that is, that is shared is we all love Bowling Green. And if we can start from that place, then you can start to have some of the conversations about how do we make Bowling Green a better place to live?
A quick specific question?
Sure, I'll let them. I'm sorry, that was your call. I'll yield the floor to her, it's your call whether or not she speaks. I wasn't.
Would you all mind speaking, just because there's people who'll be watching later online, or be watching now, just so they know the question and the answer?
Question is, of those 36,000 who come in daily but don't live here, how much are, how many of them are commuting WKU students?
And the answer is, we don't, that data's not, I don't think that data's available. We didn't get it.
Thank you. And the second, and the second question is, is there some kind of a ratio, and this may make naivete, but I know that our area's rapidly growing, and recycling can't keep up, and internet can't keep up with us, is there some kind of a ratio between increase in housing and the need for increase in infrastructure?
That's out of our scope and out of my area of expertise, I wouldn't know, infrastructure.
So that's what we're gonna hear about next, infrastructure growth, thank you.
Remember, did you, is this the comments that you wanna make that you listed on here?
Yes.
The question was asked where the substandard housing neighborhoods were. If you want to extinguish substandard housing for the citizens of Bowling Green and Warren County, then the city needs to pass ERLTA, the Uniform Residential Landlord and Tenant Act. But Bowling Green and Warren County residents have no protections built in for renters to protect them from predatory landlords who refuse to fix the low standards, or raise substandard housing living conditions. So why does it matter which neighborhoods they're in? The Bowling Green City Commission has had many opportunities to pass ERLTA, but refuses to pass it. Why is that? Could it be? Could it be because, hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're on.
Could it be because a few of you sitting on the commission are landlords? When the vote comes up, why won't the landlords on the commission recuse yourselves from voting in a tenant protection act, even though it's a conflict of interest? Thank you.
Is your housing comment, come on up, Jennifer?
Okay. My name is Jennifer Morland, and I told Slim this, I wanted to do it last week, but you told me not to. Lexington Special Program is a special grant that Lexington has to help the homeless. Now, I was going to, I was calling Lexington, and I asked them, how did you get the funding for this special grant? And they told me, it's basically hard, it's basically hard and stuff like that. So I'm thinking that, why don't we have that? We don't have a special funding for the homeless to get on the, for housing and stuff like that. It's like, this area doesn't have any help if you're homeless, and what it is, is there should be a second homeless shelter. And there isn't a second homeless shelter. And I know it sounds crazy, but people are suffering in this area. And it's just, would be really cool if the city commissioners would know, we need a second homeless shelter. And also, we need a special funding that Lexington has and uses to help people build their homes, to get money to fix the homes. So, I wanted Slim to call them, and I don't think Slim called them, but what I would like for you to do is research what Lexington is doing, and try to use what Lexington's doing. All right, thank you.
I thought it was a couple other hands.
Well, Mr. Gramley's coming up, I, I just wanna say two things, I, I don't tell Jennifer what or what not to say. We'll talk about that when I give her a ride home tonight. And she did provide me information about Lexington that I am looking into.
Uncle Gramley in Hart Matters, 310 East Main. Yes, sir. I detected a, a high level of empathy in your report for low income folks, and you used a very interesting word towards the very end, or maybe your last or next to last slide, you used the word dilapidated, dilapidated housing. And I wonder, those houses, you mentioned that there's 500 houses, the Census Bureau tells us.
Substandard.
Substandard, that are substandard, that's the word that Census Bureau used, but you also used the word dilapidated. And, just bear with me, the Census Bureau is talking about severely overcrowded, no plumbing, couple other things. What about just egregious infractions of code? Just leaky roofs, polyurethane and masking tape where windows ought to be rotting subflooring? I see a lot more than 500 of those in this community, and I wonder, has any community ever asked you to look at something that doesn't necessarily meet the definition of substandard, but speaks to the condition of housing for low income folks? And secondly, do you find that in communities in which tenants are not protected, that that information is much more difficult to come by?
I can't answer the second question, but the, the first question was whether or not we've been asked to look at communities' housing inventory, and whether it's something more than substandard. We have been hired before to go into communities and, and drive every single street, and inventory what's classified as blight, and blight can be many things, but we've done that before, we did not do that here. I can tell you, I drove a lot of the streets, I don't, again, I wasn't looking for blight, but I was just trying to get a feel for the neighborhoods and the housing stock and stuff like that. I didn't feel that you had excessive blight in the city. My impression is the city must be doing a good job of, of addressing that. That doesn't mean people aren't living in housing that, that couldn't be better, and I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Is that, we've got to know about it, I'm directing my comments to the gentleman back there. Have you at, at any time reported those substandard houses that you've seen?
He's talking to you, Michael.
I'm sorry, he has a question.
He, he wants to know if you've ever reported any of the substandard housing that you've seen?
Well, I've reported. Yes. Well, in my business residence. In my place of business, I was not afraid to report leaks and other sorts of code violations to my landlord, and he fixed them eventually. But do I know lots of folks who live in housing, those code violations that are afraid to report it because they have no protection? Yes, several, many, and difficult to count, because people aren't going to be forthcoming about that, but I would say that it's something that'd be very, very important for us to look into, and I think you might find that the same landlords own those properties.
I understand. I know exactly what you're talking about, I've lived in Bowling Green all my life, and I know exactly what you're talking about.
It's a, it's a really, really big problem in this town.
We're gonna try to do something about it.
Hope so, I think renters' rights would be a great first step.
Any other comments?
I've got a couple of questions, maybe for the commission, one for him. Has the commission ever considered a tax moratorium for developers for low income and moderate housing? And I guess, would you consider that? And then, a question for you is, have you, did you study how many evictions there were in the city of Bowling Green? I noticed that's one of your evaluations up there.
Tax moratoriums are not permitted under state law, we have to tax according to the State law requires us to tax everybody at the same rate.
We could do other things, though, including incentives that are the same amount of taxes, we could do in lieu of things that we do, but, but a tax moratorium in and of itself is not allowed.
Well, I was just sitting there calculating a couple of things, and for a $10 million development in the city of Bowling Green, the property tax in a year is $138,000. And there's not very many tracts, large tracts of land available in the city of Bowling Green. I mean, they're all, I mean, they're in Warren County, and so I think those are the costs that, those are the main costs that are slowing down development for the city, is, you know, there's not, there's just not any property. And when there is, it's extraordinarily higher. And so that's not having any development much, much in the city, that's why it's moved all to the county. So, I just thought.
I think, I think what you're seeing in some places is that builders or contractors are tearing down old houses.
Right.
And putting up fourplexes or whatever.
As you mentioned that, my sons and I own several houses and apartment buildings here in the community, and we have an ideal situation for that, but we're kinda restricted by the, oh, tell me what I'm trying to look for, the? Historical society, that's what I'm saying, that, yeah, we're in the historical district with an old house that's somewhat dilapidated, and it's just not feasible to renovate that property. I mean, it's better suited to be tore down, it's something else built that would be, you know, affordable, but we're not able to do that, we don't think, under the existing laws.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can, sir.
For the house, you know, it, you know, most of this is a business. I mean, people, they, they take this personal, but this property ownership management is a business. I mean, we, we are in a business, we're not taking personal to anybody, and we don't discriminate against anybody that wants to rent. The only people that we have trouble with is the ones that don't wanna pay the rent, want to destroy the property. I, I don't care if they're, who they are, what they are, or what they do, we just, you know, need them to pay the rent and take care of our property. And, you know, we have, there's so many evictions here in Bowling Green that it takes three weeks mostly to get on the court docket. And in the state of Kentucky, that's the only way you can get somebody out of your property, that it doesn't matter if they broke every door in it, or destroyed everything in it, only the judge can tell them to leave the property. And then you have, sometimes you have to get the sheriff there to help them. So, property owners, you know, they have a, you know, we have a big responsibility, and, you know, it's not all just the property owners. I mean, everybody thinks people own property, well, you're sitting up here in a White Castle, and you've got all this money, and, you know, well, they've got all this money, that, you know, I don't have to pay my rent. Well, you know, we have to make payments on that property every month, and, you know, if we don't make those payments to the bank, you know, they, they don't pretend to like that very well, so.
I've got a, a comment for you, the Historic Preservation District does not prohibit you from tearing down a building.
I know they don't, but they.
If you wanna refurbish one, then the facade that faces the main street, let me finish my sentence here, let me finish my sentence here.
When you read the.
If you're, can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
I'm sorry.
When they, when they, the only requirement is for the facade that's facing the street, everything else you can, you can do pretty much what you need to with, but you can, in fact, tear the thing down. The construction, again, facing the street, needs to meet certain requirements.
Which one is only talked about there? It's my understanding that since the historical district ordinance was passed, that there hasn't been a house tore down in the city of Bowling Green in the historical district.
True.
And, I mean, that's just what I was informed of. The, I think the terminology of the historical district guidelines is that money is not a factor.
I've, I've worked on that and changed the membership of the board to try to make it more responsive to those who need to do what they need to do. In fact, there was, they used, they did have what they called an approved vendor list, which I thought was unconstitutional.
But does the terminology state that money is not a factor in determining whether the house can be tore down or not?
That's, that's probably a more detailed discussion that we, you and I and Ben probably need to have than tonight, but.
I'm not here to debate.
Yeah, but thank you for your comments, we appreciate, I need to move on to the next person, though.
And I thought that, you know, if the city commission could, you know, give tax breaks to developers, that it might encourage, you know, more development for low income, moderate housing, but.
All right, thank you, sir.
So that's a state problem.
Appreciate it. Did you have a comment?
Hi, my name's Josh Nye, and I'm a grad student at WKU, and I'm also a member of a group on campus called the Student of a, a group on campus called the Student Coalition for Renters' Rights. And so, kind of two things I want to say. Number one, I would just encourage, uh, you all while you're going forward with this process, whatever you decide to do, keep in mind, um, you know, there are a lot of college students in this town and just from what we've done, you know, we, we've talked to a lot of college students who do have concerns about affordability, uh, whether it's, you know, leases, all these kind of things. So, um, I think sometimes those tend to get overlooked because they're not here as long. Um, sometimes they're not here the whole year, but I would just urge you all to keep, keep those students in mind as you move forward. One general comment on the report, I know, uh, you said that, you know, this housing need is an opportunity for development, and I think that is true. It definitely is an opportunity for development, but I also want to, you know, the point I want to make is I would like it to be seen, especially on the low income end, more for the impact that it's having on these families. Um, you know, we need, as you said, we need housing across the board, um, but the, the better off among us can probably deal with that lack of housing a little bit better. Um, but for lower income people, um, you know, not being able to move into, uh, an affordable situation, you know, they're not working with much from the start, so it's hard on them. So I would encourage, uh, the commission to, uh, keep in mind as well the struggle that the citizens are going to and, and not, you know, focus only on the development opportunities. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that had a comment? Anyone else? Three, two, one. Thank y'all for turning in. We're, uh, completed with our meeting and we need to go into closed session, so if y'all would excuse us, please.